That's what she says, I don't know. You'll find out.
Yeah, it was over ninety days, so what the heck? Why am I hanging up?
You did. You know, you didn't.
I did.
You know, I was just asking about that.
I enjoyed your time.
I did too. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you for coming on.
Okay.
You're you.
No, maybe. There's nobody knows what's happening. I understand that we did. That's true. If you would go ahead and stand, we'll begin with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, we thank you for today. We thank you for giving us another opportunity to come to this place and to conduct the business of Walton County. Pray that you'll just keep everybody calm and let us do what's right for the citizens of Walton County and guide us and lead us as we do so, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, our nation under God, indivisible, and limited to the justice for all.
Okay, real quick before we get started, if you would, if you haven't already, please silence your phones. That way we can limit any interruptions. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I wasn't here, but I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the minutes? We have a motion, Mr. Smith, second.
Did you make the motion?
I did.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Wayne, if you'd give me just a second.
Absolutely.
Did Mr. Patton already leave?
He did.
He walked out already?
Yes, he did.
That's too bad. I wanted to thank him publicly for his service. He's done a tremendous job, and he will be sorely missed on the Planning Commission, the wealth of knowledge and historical facts that he had, so. But also wanted to welcome two new members. David Smith was here last month, so this is actually his second meeting, and John Roberts is new, and this is his first meeting. So, you have a couple of new members, Tom gone, so let's get her going.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we have several continuances tonight. I'll go through these if you don't, if it's okay.
Yep.
The first continuance is Arnett Farmer's Market. It's requested to continue to the February eleventh, two thousand sixteen, meeting, five o'clock in this location.
So, item number three on the agenda. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? David? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, next request.
Well, we need to vote real quick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, next request to continue is number six, warehouses of Center of Beach Two, formerly known as Sundial Phase Two, request to continue to February eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at five o'clock in this location.
Okay. We have a motion, a second? We have a motion by Mr. Perry. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number nine, also a request to continue, Holiday Beachside Center, request to continue to February eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at five o'clock in this location.
We have a motion, a second?
Motion continue.
Motion, a second? Mr. Smith? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items four and five, they're also requested continue, but they wish to be heard by the board, so we'll take those up.
We'll take those in order.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to the first item on the agenda under legislative items. It is a large-scale amendment for the Portland community. This is a large area that was a commercial node in the comp plan. However, with that commercial node, there are several, many, single-family residences that are included in there, which creates a problem of nonconformity with those. This was actually sponsored by the board, by the county commission, to change this. There is an area that is commercial that is also being left as commercial, that fronts the twenty, and so I'll ask Mr. Underwood. Yes, sir.
You said that the board sponsored this?
Correct.
When did they meet the sponsors?
I don't have the other meeting date. About a month ago. We also had a community meeting with the commissioner from that district in that area and discussed it.
And that district is?
Commissioner Chapman's district.
That's Portland's in District One?
Uh huh. Commissioner Chapman's district there, and so this came up. We had an individual who-
I don't believe it is, sir.
Commissioner?
Before we begin.
Sirs. But this came up because of an issue where we had an individual who's, I think his mother owned property here, and it had passed, and threw a, an issue with a appraisal. The appraisal company noticed that this was actually, the home was obviously residential, but it had a commercial land use, and this, when this issue came up, and as we investigated it further, it caused problems with some financing and also with an appraisal, which kind of brought us to the light and brought us to the attention of the board, and that's why we, that's why we were addressing it.
So, you have a problem with one individual, and you decide to change a hundred and sixty acres because one of the commissioners, not even in that district, has suggested that we do a large-scale amendment to solve a small problem, you use a giant brush stroke like this?
Mr. Kramer, if you look at the Portland community, the vast majority of this area is residential. This commercial node covers a vast majority of these residential properties. Exactly. What you have is, is those properties that are residential are nonconforming. If you're, as we discovered with this issue-
Wait a minute, you said nonconforming. I believe that in commercial residential homes are illegal nonconforming use, and in fact, other commercial single-family homes are allowed to use, isn't that correct?
If I could, can I finish, please?
Yeah.
What we're trying to-
Mr. Kramer, Mr. Kramer, let him explain.
What we're trying to solve is, and that's something that we pointed out, when this particular appraiser called us and we're talking to him, we provided him with documentation, if it's a lot of record, you're allowed to have a single-family home, and what we discovered was, is that that wasn't clear to them, and the appraiser, and we've had other issues there as well with some of the financing, they see it as being commercial. And I know we have language that says various things in there, but they saw it as being commercial. And they have properties that are residential in that commercial. That, that on its face is, has what has caused some of these problems with this. And so with that, that's why this issue came up, and that's why we're trying to address it.
For one homeowner?
One homeowner, but when we met with the community, we had several people at the community meeting that were surprised that they were commercial. They did not know they were commercial. They assumed they're residential because it's residential property. And so at that, at that community meeting we had, they were unaware that it was even commercial. They were unaware it even, had even changed. And so I think that sort of, you know, brought to light where this is probably not an appropriate land use for this, for this community.
Well, I can understand what Underwood would be, but hasn't it been that land use for twenty years?
It's been quite some time, that land use. That's right. That's right. That's right. But, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Brian to come up, give the particulars of this particular application?
Thank you.
But that's the gist of the county's position of why we feel like it needs to be changed. Again, just trying to clear up what we believe is a bit of an error.
Okay. Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is project number fifteen dash zero zero nine zero 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 nine, proposed Portland Community Large-Scale Amendment, amendment number twenty fifteen dash zero one eight. Applicant is Walton County Board of County Commissioners. The request is to amend the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Designation on plus or minus one hundred and thirty-one acres from general commercial to rural low density. The project is located approximately three point five miles west of the state road twenty and U.S. Highway three thirty-one intersection to the north and south of state road twenty. The proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map includes one land use category containing plus or minus one hundred and thirty-one acres, proposed to be classified as general commercial. Based on existing and anticipated land uses within this area, the proposed rural low-density designation is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Goal L dash one as further guided by provisions of the Land Development Code. The proposed amendment of the future land use map is sought to resolve existing legal nonconformities within the areas subject to the proposed amendment. In nineteen ninety-six, during the adoption of the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the subject parcels were designated as general commercial. The general commercial category does not specifically expressly provide allowances for single-family residential uses. Policy L dash one point four point three of the Walton County Comprehensive Plan states that the general commercial feature land use category is intended to provide for general commercial uses that serve the larger community and the traveling public. This category permits a broad range of commercial operations and services. Presently, the parcels subject to the proposed amendment to the future land use map contain a total of twenty-three residential dwelling units. You can see the predominant residential use within the northwest portion on the map that's on the screen. These are considered as legal nonconformities as described in Walton County Land Development Code, Section eight point zero one point zero one A. This section defines a legal nonconformity as follows: A legal nonconformity is any land use, structure, lot of record, or sign legally established prior to the effective date of this code which would not be permitted by or is not in full compliance with the regulations of this code. Walton County Land Development Code, Section eight point zero one point zero three A, further states that in the event that any nonconforming structure or use is destroyed by any means to the extent of more than fifty percent of the fair market value of the structure before the calamity, such structure or use shall not be restored, rebuilt, or reoccupied for any purpose until it shall thereafter conform to all regulations of this code. And we have had a fair amount of public comment. I've spoken with roughly a dozen citizens and property owners within this area, the majority of whom expressed support for the amendment. We have contacted, or been contacted by two property owners, Mr. Jerry Simmons and Mr. King, who have expressed an interest in keeping their general commercial designations, and I-
Can you show us or tell us?
They are, yes, yes, sir. They're located to the south of State Road twenty, and they're within the eastern portion of that area generally, and I believe Mr. King is here tonight and would like to speak-
They both signed up to speak.
At the proper time, yes, sir. There's some more exhibits on this parcel. That's the flood zone map, the wetland map. This is the proposed classification of the, of the one hundred and thirty-one acres following the proposed amendment as it is currently proposed by the county. The light tan crosshatched area is proposed for rural low-density. The blue parcel is to remain institutional as it currently exhibits, and the general commercial remaining in red is proposed to be retained as currently in place there. And again, we've spoken with roughly a dozen citizens, and the requested action is a motion to recommend approval or denial of the request for adoption of an ordinance amending the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Designation on plus or minus one hundred and thirty-one acres from general commercial to rural low-density.
Okay. Does anybody have any further questions of staff? Mr. Kramer?
Who drew the map, and why is there, I guess, and why is the red only on the north side of a state road highway, and it's been commercial for twenty years, and several of the owners on the south side have petitioned for it? Why does the map not reflect that, especially at the intersection on the south side, that there are, there's commercial, there should be commercial on the south side?
The original map, as we drew it, we analyzed the properties that were residential and the ones that are being used commercially. That's the genesis of map. However, staff has no opposition. If they want to remain commercial, we have no opposition to that whatsoever. What we wanted to do is provide the opportunity to people if they, to come into compliance with the existing use. If that's not desired, I don't believe any, I know as staff, as planning staff, we don't have any opposition to that whatsoever. We would-
Would that include, from your, I didn't go out and walk every parcel, but just primarily, I'm interested specifically, I think, of value parcel and not to be a Burt Harris action, that the parcels, because if they're, if I'm not mistaken, that the State Road twenties and the proposed, to be, and the MBE to be proposed, or not MBE, but proposed to be widened to a four lane highway in the next, in the fifteen-year or twenty-year plan. And so what I didn't want to do to these people that have commercial valuations along State Road when the condemnation comes, is be subject to a Burt Harris action that we devalue their property to rural, especially, or to residential, when they didn't want to be residential.
Right. And again, and that's a good point, Mr. Kramer, and I think, again, from staff's perspective, if they want to remain, remain commercial, we would have no opposition to that whatsoever.
Would you have a recommendation to same width or swath that you apportioned on the north side of State Road twenty, something equal to that or similarly equal depending on the parcel outlet, be it, be it of the work on the south side?
And I'm sure-
That's really the only argument I have.
Yeah, and standing here tonight, and if I had a chance to look at it, I want to look at what's there. I mean, because if it's, if it's resident, if there's a residential home there, I'd be a little bit concerned about doing that, because as we said before, right now, we're in an area that if there's a home there, it's commercial, it's nonconforming. However, you know, if the property owner wishes to stay commercial, we, again, we would not have any opposition to that whatsoever.
On that point, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to be real clear on this for myself and anybody who's going to speak to it, to see me. I wonder if you could speak into your microphone and turn it on, maybe, please?
Sam, got it a little better?
Hold on.
Sorry about that. Is that the portions that are currently residential, is it not in fact the case that commercial land use category allows for one commercial, one residential unit in a commercial?
There is no density assigned to the commercial land use category.
But the language does specify that they're allowed to have a-
We have language in our code that says, but the problem, the problem is you have the, a use issue with the commercial.
I know it can't be subdivided.
Right, and all these things, we presented all the information when this issue came up to the appraiser and the appropriate entities that were asking us questions, they, they did not feel comfortable with that language. And that, that's why we said, we understand, we can make it clear about, you know, proposing a land use change, and that's kind of where we, how we got to this point.
Okay. And I really, commissioners, I really don't have any issue with it, other than the parcels that are actually fronting on State Road twenty that, you know, could take a big hit with the expansion of the highway in the future, if they've been downgraded to a residential category from a commercial opportunity that they have had for twenty years.
The individuals that you said that wished to remain commercial, where are their parcels at?
Sir, they're, they're located to the south of State Road twenty.
So, what's shown in gold on this map, part of that would remain red?
If, if the owners desire that.
If they wish to remain commercial.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I guess going forward, if we were to approve this, could we put a condition in there to where if a property owner, there has to be a condition in there, where a property owner, if they, if they, if they wish to remain commercial, that, I mean, how would we do that?
Mr. Chairman, I defer to Mr. Davis, but I don't believe we can conditionally approve a large-scale amendment.
No, what I would, that's correct, and what I would suggest is each of them have received notice of, and of both tonight's hearing and the county commission meeting.
Right.
If they want to opt out essentially, they certainly can contact us or appear at the meeting and opt out.
And of course, we have this-
Well, I guess that was my hope, that was what I was asking, is that can there be an opt-out between now and approval?
They'll have tonight's meeting and of course the county commission meeting, they could certainly appear and ask to opt out.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate, if a property owner wants to remain commercial, we, we actually do not want to interfere with that. What we're, we're really trying to do is get those into compliance, and warranting compliance, in case of a power, in case of some other issue that came up, in case they wanted to sell it and there was a problem selling it and so forth. That's the main purpose tonight. It's really trying to clear up what we believe is probably an issue that we should have dealt with many, many years ago.
Does anybody else have questions for staff? We do have a few people that have signed up to speak. Jerry Simmons?
Yes, sir. My name is Jerry Simmons. I live at five twenty-five Mooney Road, Fort Walton Beach, Florida. I've owned the property of south of the road for, since, for forty-three years. Bought it from a family member, she's been in the family ever since. I've written a rather lengthy page and a quarter to you folks, which you, and I didn't, I went over along with it, but it makes the points that I wanted to make. And first of all, I did not get invited to a community discussion of these, these issues. I did not know about it. I did, we did meet with Mr. Underwood, and he was very helpful in terms of thought that it was probably okay if we decided we wanted to stay commercial, it would be fine. My point is that we're on the south side of the road. We have direct interface to the seventy-foot offsite, offset, rather, from the center line of the highway, and we want to retain that, and we want to remain commercial. And I made the points in the letter, and I would appreciate if you guys, I'm sure, I know you read it, so I do thank you for this opportunity. But it is important to us and to my family, because we believe the commercial designation is more valuable to us than a low-density. Now, having said that, I note that on the north side of the road, the property that was, is residence on the, in the red area, it is, it has, as far as the, at eighty-five South, eighty-five Church Street, is designated low-density for the house, but on each side it's red and on the back it's red. So, my house that I have, it's a hundred years old, that we sometimes, the family sometimes goes to, is, we could, in order to be consistent with the county's initiative to make houses in commercial areas low-density, I proposed in my letter that you could, we could take a hundred and twenty-five by a hundred and fifty centered around the house facing Portland Park Road, and that would be satisfactory to us, but everything else, we have, we have six or seven hundred feet of depth from the highway. We have a thousand feet across the back and interfacing with Alaco Estates. We have-
Do you front on both sides of Portland Park Road?
Absolutely. We have, we have both sides, and I made the point in the letter that this is, from our perspective-
You have nineteen-plus acres right there, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I was just trying to locate you on the map.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They're not referencing my name.
It's oh-four-six.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to be sure.
That's okay.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Simmons, would what they're talking about as far as the opt-out, would that satisfy what you need?
You remain commercial.
To remain commercial?
Here's what I want, right. What I want to do is to have this entire block south of the road, from the highway all the way back down to Alaco Estates, and then our, all of our property, east and west of Portland Park Road designated commercial. And the reason is explained in the letter.
I understand, what I'm saying is, what they're saying is that if you wish to do that, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Dyess, you, you have the ability to opt out of this chain and remain commercial.
Right. Okay, so is it not necessary then to designate low-density for the house that we may use it from time to time?
No, it's not.
Okay.
So, so you have property, you want it to remain commercial, but you want your house to remain residential, or to be residential?
Well, I thought I was, I thought I was being cooperative in saying that if you want to, if it's absolute no-no, that you designate the house with a low-density, then everything around it, which is the same, which is a situation with eighty-five Church Street.
Right, and if we can do that, we just need to get the location of the house.
He can get with y'all later before the meeting.
Yeah, and I think Brian probably, if Brian knows that.
Brian knows that.
Yes, sir. We have no problem making that recommendation, bringing that forward, identifying that area as, as you wish.
And I'm talking now about the entire block of south property that we own, not just, not just a hundred feet on, on the road.
Do you understand that?
And I do thank you very much for this opportunity, and-
Mr. Simmons, do you own more than the one nineteen-acre parcel? You don't own the other parcels south of the highway, do you? Because there's, basically, there's only one, two, three, four, five, six owners south of the highway.
Well, there's, yeah, other than Alaco Estates.
Right.
There is, there's a vacant lot, which is owned by Mr. Linton, which is south of the-
Across the street from you?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's on the west side of Portland Park Road, and my property surrounds that.
Yep.
I asked, well, anyway, the other, the other person that owns property is Judith Melbourne. Melbourne, thank you.
She's on Parkland, Portland Park House, huh?
And she has, she has some property on Portland Park Road, almost on the highway, but not quite. It's on the east side of Portland Park Road, I see, and so forth. So, I understood, she's aware of this, because she's gotten a letter.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what her input was, but, okay, well, bottom line is, I appreciate your, because I did not want to, and I made the points in the letter, so I appreciate-
Well, we appreciate you taking the time to come up here and address it.
Well, I wanted to do it, it's important to me and my family.
Absolutely.
I think it's better than low-density. Don't want that low-density.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry King?
Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Larry King. I live in Portland. I also own some property right on twenty, some on the north side of the road, some on the south side of the road. Do you need these, ma'am?
Mr. King, do you have the mini-stories facility?
No, I do not.
Okay.
There's a map, and those facilities there, it shows exactly which piece I own, it's marked out. The piece on the, on the north side is, is, as proposed, going to stay commercial property. Okay, the piece on the south side, the way that the tax collector's got it marked out on your map, it's showing somebody else owns that piece, okay? But in that, in that folder that's been passed out, there's deeds that's dated back to nineteen twenty-six from my granddad, where we actually owned the property, so I checked with him this morning, he said he needed those copies, all that, so, you know, to prove that my ownership is legal on the south side of the road, that I want to remain commercial also.
Okay.
So.
Well, does it sound, do you like what's been discussed? Do you have any ability to opt out of this? Would satisfy what you're, what you need?
Yeah, like, like I said, mine stays commercial, that's what I want to stay, so I'm fine with, yeah.
Okay, just make sure that Brian and Mr. Underwood are-
Yes, sir, and-
Could you point out Mr. King's property on the south side of the road?
It's in this package you just gave us.
Yeah, but it's not existent.
It's in the area right here, David. If you look right here, where the cursor is.
Okay.
Right there, and if you see the cursor, it's right there, it's a strip right there. And again, Mr. Chairman, as we're reiterating, would be, we have no opposition to that whatsoever.
Right, okay. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time.
David, it looks like it's- David, it looks like it's, nobody will notice, but it's 021004, I think it's the last three digits.
In the table.
Is there, is there any question what the procedure is for opting out?
No, they just requested it, we won't, we won't transmit it with their numbers, with their property ID number.
We'll get that all cleared out. We do the, well, let's, when we get to the motion, we'll make sure we have all that cleared.
We'll exclude those numbers.
Yes. Gerald Bauer, or Bro?
Brown.
Brown, that'll do it.
Evening. My name is Gerald Brown, I live in Portland.
Okay.
I don't think my property is involved in this, but my first cousin's, and she's here with me, she did not sign to speak. There's, Phyllis Messer, Phyllis Messer.
Gerald Brown.
My name's Gerald Brown. But there was three, four properties of my first cousin's that was involved, that was on the sign out front. None of them is, apparently none of them is in the area here.
Okay.
Well, we want some clarification is what we want.
Okay.
This blue indication on the map, is that the community center?
Yes, sir.
So we're to understand that nothing above the community center is involved.
Well, the area above the community center is proposed to be residential instead of commercial. So the area, this area that's, that's in the yellow is proposed to be residential. The area that's in red here is proposed, is proposed to stay as it is, general commercial.
So you, what is rural low-density?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're calling residential?
Yes, that's right.
Because you're saying this is rural, rural.
Residential, yes, sir.
It's rural low dens, uh.
That's right.
Density now?
No, sir, right now it's commercial. It's commercial.
This area appears commercial?
Yes, it's commercial now. Let me show you the existing land use. This is the existing, all the area here is all general commercial right now.
Okay.
This is the community center here, that's with the, with the blue, blue area there. But all of this is shown to be commercial. This area here is shown to stay commercial, and this area here was being proposed to be residential, save now for the few people who've spoken who want to remain commercial, will do that. But the area here is residential.
Okay, then I am affected by it, because you're talking about changing my property to residential.
That's right.
Okay.
From, from, from its existing commercial.
Well, I can tell you that I've talked to 1215 of my relatives that lives in that area. No one has heard of any type of meeting, no one has attended any type of meeting. Two of them received a letter notifying them that they were going to have this meeting today.
Okay.
Nobody wants their property changed from what it is now.
Okay.
Okay, and they, if they have an option to opt out, then we want to know about how we go about opting out.
We'll make sure you know that.
Mr. Spencer, can you?
We want each and every property owner contacted and given that option to opt out.
Do you have your parcel ID number, or?
No, I do not. We, 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 this, all this, we first found out about this when they posted signs beside the road. And no one notified us of anything, so we came to the meeting to find out what's going on.
Do you have a reference map that you could show Mr. Spencer, so he could point out some of those parcels? We could get the parcel ID numbers.
Yes, sir. First of all, I did want to mention that the list, the mailing list for the mail-outs that we provided letters via certified mail, that was obtained from the Walton County Property Appraisers website, and it included the subject 131-acre box plus all properties listed within 300 feet of the boundary of that box. That came from the Walton County Property Appraisers.
You're talking about this box, is the red here?
No.
Well, the 131-acre boundary.
Phyllis Messer at 46 Blackjack Road, 34 Florida, was now the latter. Certified mail was received.
Which one was?
Do you have his parcel ID number, please, Gary?
45 Bryan Lane?
46 Blackjack Road.
No, 45 Bryan Lane. I live at 45 Bryan Lane. You're talking about changing my property to residential. I would not receive anything. My first cousin, who lives just north of me, David Brown, has not received anything. Phyllis, Phyllis Messer received a letter. Peggy Zander did not receive a letter. Do what now?
Is there a relation to Velma Brown?
Vermile. If you send a ver.
Just real quick, Wayne, let me ask you, Mark, maybe for you. Would it be best, since these people are saying they didn't get notified, to maybe table this and bring it back up later and give the, give the planning staff time to work through these issues?
Mr. Chairman, that's on board. I feel very confident that we use the taxidermist database to get their mail-outs, but again, if it pleases the commission.
I think that, I think what will happen, if we continue with this, it's going to get real confusing with people wanting to opt out and, and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I will suggest this. If, if they want to contact us, please come see us or call us, so we can, so we'll have a parcel number, and then at the next meeting, if you choose to table this or continue this, we will be glad. Put together a map showing the people who have contacted us and who have said they do or do not want.
And can you, also on that map, I guess you could provide the, the addresses or parcel numbers that the letter was sent to, and you got a return receipt from.
On the reference map data table, it would be, I think what Chairman's asking about is if, also included on the, but is this done in somebody else's? You, I guess your staff prepared the compatibility analysis.
Yes, I mean, all, all of them.
If you could add the names to that, it would, it would really facilitate this thing moving along a lot faster, because then I could pull that up and extrapolate whether they're actually in here or not.
I think we continue this tonight like this, I think it gets real confusing for everybody. I would rather make sure we take our time and do it, and when we come back, have something that we can rely on a little bit better.
Sir, most, most of the people that lives around me are related to me, and we've lived, we've lived there for 80, 90 years, and we're very suspicious any time that Walton County wants to change anything.
Mr. Brown, I understand that, and that's why I'm trying to slow this down and hopefully get some clarification.
Well, it would help, it would help when they do contact them to, like, general commercial as opposed to rural low-density, just what does that mean?
Well.
How's it going to affect my property? How's it going to affect my ability to use my property?
Mr. Brown, thank you. We're going to try to address those things, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask them to contact us with, if they have a letter, contact us, and, and then we can prepare a list of the ones that do not, who want it or do not want it. Let me reiterate what, how this became. This, we were trying to solve an issue, not trying to do anything, as we stated before. But if they want to contact us, we'll be glad to put together a, a table for the, for the commission and let you identify the parcel number, where it's located, and what their desires are.
I think that would be a good idea, if we continue this maybe to the next meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make the suggestion that since this is a county-sponsored amendment, and it's always in the benefit of the county, because they represent the people, to maybe, it doesn't have to be certified mail. Just send out a simple survey to these folks, to everybody that, a letter to each one of those that has a parcel in this small 133 thing, say, want to opt out, want to be in? Do you have questions about that? Better call us.
Soliciting input.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that.
Man, I don't think 42 cents or 49 cents is shot.
There's not that many property owners in that area. I think it wouldn't, probably would be too difficult. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, that's not.
But I think, I think at this point, if we could get a motion to continue, that'd probably be the wisest track forward.
Second.
No motion in a second?
You want to have a date certain, or?
You want to make it that?
So, to, how much time do you need to make it?
To, to prepare a letter and send it out and get responses back? No, it's going to be longer than that. Probably so.
The March?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just a minute. Okay. We have a, we have. We do have a motion in a second on the table. Are you Judy?
Yes.
Okay, you can come up and speak, Judy.
Thank you for allowing me to come forward. My name's Judith Melbourne, or Judy. We live in Tennessee, but I do own three pieces of property that's in this description, okay? My only concern is south of 20, Mr. Simmons related, that he would like his to remain commercial. I too would like my lot there to remain commercial. My lot, do you want me to give you by?
No, what you need to do is contact the planning office and make sure they have that.
Okay.
But if you could tell me where it is on the map, that would help me.
Okay, it's, 12IS20320069.
Got it.
Okay. But you need to contact the planning office to make sure that they have that, okay?
Okay. Like I say, Alaco Estates is not involved in this, so that's not an issue.
Right.
I have a lot on the north side of 20, and I didn't even realize it had been zoned commercial until I got this letter and called.
Okay.
So that was an eye-opener for me. It's the first time I even knew that Florida had, had done this in 1996.
Well.
So, like I say, I'd like for mine to stay commercial.
Thank you very much.
How about the parts on the north side?
Uh, I'd like for it to remain commercial, but I don't think it will, because that's for the general.
You can opt out.
Okay. Uh.
But just make sure that the planning staff, we don't need to, make sure they understand your parcel numbers that are affected and what you want done with them.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tom Yaley? Okay. Nobody else has signed up? Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak on this topic? Saying no, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion amongst commissioners? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are quasi-judicial, need to be sworn in.
Anyone anticipate?
Anyone anticipate speaking or testifying to the board on any item remaining on the docket, a quasi-judicial docket? Would you please stand and raise your right hands?
Let's let everybody clear out real quick, Mark, we can see who's here and who's not.
There we go. Thank you. Do each of you, do each of you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Would you do us two favors? When you come up, say your name, and it helps us if you spell your last name, and tell us that you have been sworn, okay? Commissioners, any of you had any ex parte contacts that would prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision?
No.
None. None, Miss Thane?
On this matter or all of the matters?
Why don't we just say all the matters?
Well, in all the matters, I took it on my own volition to go out to the Santa Rosa Ridge subdivision that was subject to the Fox Lake thing, and while I was out there, I had.
He ain't here, I'm sorry.
While I was out looking at the Fox Lake project, I had the opportunity and the, and the fortune, good fortune, to run onto two of the neighbors, and we discussed the project while I was out there.
Would that prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision?
No, I was illuminated by the conversation and the walk in the woods, and that's what I chose to be, and I wanted to thank those neighbors for being.
Thank you.
Thank you for the disclosure.
Yes.
Mr. Dyes?
Mr. Chairman, number two on our agenda is the Dalton Gibson abandonment. I'll ask Brian Underwood from our staff to brief the board on this application.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is an abandonment development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering, requesting approval for abandonment of a 50-foot easement along the eastern portions of lots 31 and 32 of Dune Allen Third Edition subdivision, consisting of plus or minus .49 acres with feature land use of residential preservation. The project is located off Allen Loop Road, approximately .1 miles from the Allen Loop load and the road and the Hillcrest Road intersection on the east side of the road, and identified by parcel number 04-3S-20-34080-000-0320 The property subject to the proposed abandonment is located within the Dune Allen Third Edition subdivision as recorded in Walton County Platt Book 3, page 51. The easement was dedicated through the recording of the plat. I've spoken with the project agent on that concern. It's not, according to the agent, not a government patent easement. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the requested project is consistent with the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. We have not received any comments from the public.
Any questions for staff?
Just, were all the neighbors, was this a 300-foot notice requisition by certified mail on, on an abandonment?
Yes, sir.
And outside of that 300 feet, because the easement, the 50-foot right-of-way easement, continues all the way to, all the way up north to the, looks like about to the golf course, I don't know what that street's called up there that's not approved, but none of those owners were contacted if they weren't within the 300 feet, is that right?
Only by the certified mail, but beyond.
And that was only within the 300-foot range?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
Do you know what the purpose of the easement was to begin with?
Presumably for access and utilities, but I did not research that to determine with certainty.
And there's nobody using it?
It does not appear to be the case. I can let Mr. Jenkins address that also.
The applicant?
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, my name is Randy Gardner. I'm here on behalf of my friends that, the applicants. Not here as a paid consultant, that'll be Mr. Jenkins. I was going to add a few personal, but I have to be careful, because I, sometimes that I say my worst enemy is talking too much. The, several months ago, the applicant, my good friend Tricia Dalton approached me, said, "Based on Randy, all of your years on the planning commission, what do you think my odds are of abandoning and easing?" I said, "They're not very good historically for very legitimate reasons. But if you'll bring your material, let me see why you feel it's a legitimate request and what the merits of it are. Let me give you my opinion before you hire a consultant to go any further." Because if you're going down a dead-end street, you should know it before you start. I looked at the, the original plat from 1964. I walked the property, which is a 50-foot easement, that actually is behind the applicant's home. It's a 50-foot easement that runs north and south along the golf course, all completely grown trees, large trees, pine trees, and so on. The, the north end of that easement, as Mr. Kramer said, is actually empties into the Dune Allen golf facility. To the north is golf, to the left, actually to the north is the clubhouse, and to the right is golf, and to the left is golf. So in my opinion, the future use for roadway was not really likely. The problem that the applicants have, they don't want to do anything with it. They want to help ensure that it stays in a pristine position that it now is, because in, on the south end of that easement, the lots are greatly impaired. That's the biggest impairment or the biggest intrusion of that easement. And one of the applicants, the Daltons, their home is actually within one foot of the easement. So at any time in the future that easement is cleared, then they would have a far less desirable home than they have, than they have now. My only suggestion to them, which is, they have agreed, and they'll say so, and Mr. Jenkins will say so, that the easement not be abandoned at 50 feet, abandon 30 feet, that would be adjacent to their property, and the other 20 feet would remain or could remain, or should remain, I don't know about should, but could remain, for future water and sewer. Roadway, I could, I could see no future use or any access points for, for the road, but the unknown future says there may be a need for water and sewer. So hopefully, I'll turn, that you will consider my comments accordingly, and I'll sit down and leave Mr. Jenkins to make a presentation, answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Thank you very much.
Scott Jenkins, with Jenkins Engineering, been sworn in. I think Randy did a good job of really explaining the basic intent of this abandonment request. As he stated, it runs in between the golf course and the existing subdivision. It's 50. fifty feet. It, it really had, serves no purpose at this time, and I think the applicants are just concerned that maybe in the future it may be cleared at some point, and they're trying to protect their property. At one point, there was a bit of power line, I'm sorry, telephone lines that were run on the south end of that, which are no longer there, I've talked to the phone company about that. It, it's, it's a area that's really never been cleared or used for anything in the past, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have. Any other questions?
Yes, do, thank you. I wanted to know about the topography, since a topo wasn't included in this, from the house, which way does the land fall in the easement?
Towards the golf course in general, towards the golf course.
So it slopes away from the house?
Yes.
And do you know if the current owner of the Dalton property that was one, within one foot of this easement, whether they built the house or whether they bought the house?
I don't know.
I just, it's amazing to me to find that they, they got a building permit to build within one foot of an easement.
Yeah, well, yeah, and this platte being as old as it is, you know, they may not have known it was there.
The house doesn't look that old in the pictures, but that was just, those are my only questions. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Any other questions for asking? So I guess, it's a fifty-foot easement, and they're willing to, they want the whole fifty feet abandoned.
But, but they understand that there may be a need for future expansion of water, sewer, or power, some, some utility use.
Would twenty-foot, would a twenty-foot easement be sufficient for that?
Yes, sir, typically, yes. Twenty-foot easement's kind of standard.
Where would this, where would the utilities go if, I mean, obviously, the house is already front on roads that are, that are.
Would there ever be a need for expansion, you mean? Where would, where would it run to? Probably not, honestly, unless at some point in time something different happened at the golf course.
Unless they closed the golf course.
Golf courses don't last forever sometimes.
Well, if something happened there, then that would be the reason for it.
Right.
Of course, at the same time, if they redevelop the golf course, I would assume they'd provide their own access and utilities for that point.
Yeah, it'd be about utilities, probably not easement ever.
Okay. Anybody else get questions? Don't see any.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my comments are that, because this isn't a nineteen sixty-four platte, and in the last sixty years, or seventy now, sixty, that it hasn't come to fruition that that be developed in any sense, that some merit needs to be taken, which I, I'm typically ninety, a hundred percent against abandonments. But in this case, since the applicant brought up a good compromise, or the applicant's friend brought up a good compromise, my suggestion would be something like Solomon, split the baby twenty-five for each. That would be my recommendation.
Would that be a motion?
No, well, it could be, but I just wanted to bring it up for discussion with the board.
I'm like you, I'm never, very seldom in favor of abandonments, but it makes, how this is situated, it makes sense.
Yeah.
But I do see some, it makes sense to, to keep something there, just in case.
Make sure you ask for public comment.
Yeah.
Well, is twenty percent, or the twenty feet, is that, that's traditional?
For utilities, yes, it's pretty, pretty standard, within a subdivision or something.
Okay. All right. Any public comments? Oh, there's no one signed up, but if you're here and you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear you. Don't see anybody. Commissioners?
I'd make a motion that we split the difference and give them the twenty-five foot of the easement, or abandon twenty, the west twenty-five feet of the, of the easement be abandoned.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second for discussion, because I'd like to, I mean, I don't know why we need to cut that extra five out on them if it's traditional that, you know, a twenty-foot easement is for utilities, yeah.
I amend my motion, if that's the consensus of the board members.
I agree with that.
I'll amend my motion to make it the, to abandon the west thirty feet of the easement.
I'll amend my second, then.
We have a motion to abandon the west thirty feet, remain, so the other twenty feet would remain in the easement. And, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner, the next item on the agenda is number four, Village Station. Uh, this is, our staff has actually requested this to be continued, do do some outstanding comments. I'll ask Brian Underwood to kind of come up to the, to the podium and, and discuss with the planning commission the outstanding comments, and so here's Brian.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. The project went through the technical review committee several months ago. There were a few comments from planning department which needed to be addressed. The agent did provide a resubmital around the middle of December. There were still several comments from the planning department that we felt were not fully and adequately addressed. I have coordinated with the project agent, Mr. Burgess, about these outstanding comments. One of my comments that I felt was outstanding is not actually valid, so that one went away, but there still are four to five comments that we feel were not fully addressed.
Can you tell us what those are? I don't see them.
Uh, it, it was not stated within our documentation provided to you. One of those, uh, the items that we felt needs to be addressed further was the addition of a sidewalk along the east shoulder, or the eastern right-of-way of thirty A. There is a existing multi-use path on the west side of thirty A at this location, but the recommendation from the department is that the actual project site needs to have a five-foot sidewalk included in the, in the design. So we would like to see revised plans submitted that included the sidewalk. There's also some just minor labeling issues. We, we would like to see some dimensions added to a proposed fence on the south boundary of the Village Station project, which is between some residential uses to the south and the proposed Village Station site. I believe we have some aerials in here. There it is. So the, there was a final order for this project, um, two thousand four?
Two thousand five, if I recall correctly.
Thank you. Uh, the, the final order required that a fence be provided between the proposed commercial and the adjacent residential areas, and in addition, we, we have received a ten or fifteen comments in writing from the public expressing concern over the lack of some buffering between the proposed commercial uses and the residential, and I've, Dean is aware of these comments. We've, Dean and I have coordinated well on this, on the concerns from the public, but that is our rationale for requesting.
So those things are not included, and what's been submitted to you now?
The actual fence was shown on Dean's resubmital drawings. I would just like to have a specific linear feat of the fence added to the site plan drawing, so there's no lack of clarity. There's a lot of information presented on the site plan, very detailed.
Height was designated on the fencing?
Um, I don't recall, but that's an important thing to add. The, the site plan that Dean turned in is very detailed, and I, we just would like to make sure the length of that fence is really drawn onto the site plan.
Chairman, if I can add real quick, too, we've tried to make a very concerted effort. If, if a plan's not ready to be brought forward with comments, it doesn't get advertised. This one fell during the holidays with a lot of, as typical holidays, some, some people are in and out, and in reality, we probably shouldn't have advertised it, and that's typically what happens. In this case, it, it did get advertised with some outstanding comments, but again, I, I think we support Brian in trying to make sure when these things come to the planning commission, they are fully vetted and fully addressed.
We'd like to see them complete.
Right.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Advocate, Dean?
Good evening, members of the board. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates. But obviously, the first thing I'd like to discuss tonight is the ability to hear the project. The handful of comments that Mr. Underwood presented to you, we don't have any problem with. The sidewalk will certainly want, will certainly add to the site plan. The reason that we didn't have the sidewalk was in previous projects, it was the county's position to encourage people to use the existing multi-use paths, and actually would allow you not to place a sidewalk, or even encourage you not to place a sidewalk in front of your development if a multi-use path existed across the street. The, uh, what we would do is direct them to the multi-use path. That consensus has changed. I guess the multi-use path is, is highly utilized, and another means of sidewalk system is, is necessary and desired by the county. So we, we'll put in the sidewalk, and actually, my office has done that, we just obviously could not circulate that to you and get it in your packets. The fence, I, I understand they'd like to, to mention that fence, we have no problem doing that. The height of the fence, I guess what we would like to get is a consensus of what's too high, what's too low. If they want a four-foot fence, we'll certainly put a four-foot, if a five-foot's desirable. Again, we're amenable to whatever's being requested. These are very simple comments, and I think that the discussion of the project can be conditioned upon these, these comments being satisfactorily addressed.
Well, you know, just from my perspective, Dean, I know, nothing, I mean, we have put as a board, I think, a lot of pressure on staff not to bring in stuff that's not complete, because you start conditioning stuff going forward, it just makes it, it's just confusing. We'd like, you know, a complete project is always better than not complete project, obviously.
I understand, but I, I, not, not to argue.
Oh, that's all right.
But these items, I truly believe, are very minor. They don't create any sort of redesign, because I understand the ripple effect. If you redesign a parking lot, all of a sudden, your buffers change, and there's a problem. I don't see any of these comments creating that sort of impact to the project.
I can tell you what the problem is from my perspective, how the commissioners are. We didn't get a package on it.
Yeah.
So I haven't had a chance to review it.
Understood.
Therein lies, you know, I'd have to sit up here in front of everybody and wait, wade through while we read it and analyze it, make questions. I think we've already voted on a continuance.
Not on this one, we haven't.
So this was not included in your packets?
No.
No.
Because I know my office ran the seventeen copies and, for distribution.
And here's the reason why, we have TRC meetings, comments are given out at that time, you know, we have multiple projects coming to this office at any given time. We have, I can't tell you how many projects we have. We can't, I know we get resubmittals, but yeah, we have people who are submitting also, and then we have BCC submittals, it's, so I may reiterate, we want to make sure that things are very clear and concise when it gets to the planning commission.
Understood.
If we start, you know, we'll, we'll call this room, you bring it to this meeting and submit there, it becomes a mess.
I think there has to be a rule, and the rule has to be followed, that's, because if it's not, then it just creates confusion everywhere, and I, and I understand that. And I know that's why it wasn't included in the package, so.
Dean, I'm sorry, I mean.
Yeah, I was, I was under the impression that y'all got it in your packets, but it was gonna be requested for continuance. Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't think so.
Just address his stuff for the TRC, or if you have to go back that far again.
Best of my knowledge, it's done.
Okay. We have a couple people that signed up to speak. Debbie Coon?
I'm Mr. Sarah.
Michael Galvin?
Do we need to speak? Yeah.
Dan Schofield?
They're gonna get another opportunity, it's the next meeting.
It'll be the next, we're not gonna hear it tonight, so.
I just want to make a few comments. My name is Debbie Cooner, C-O-O-N-E-R. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at the Village of Blue Mountain Beach, the master association that has the condominiums and the homes. We just wanted to, first of all, say we are in support of having the commercial property developed. However, we do have some concerns that we are working through with the owners and the developer, and they will all be addressed when, when you hear the hearing, but since I understand you're not gonna consider conditions tonight.
Not tonight.
I, there's really no point in going over them. They, they've been sent to Brian, and so we will be working with the developer to get those conditions addressed, and we've all agreed to work together, and, you know, the purpose for us and for everyone involved in this, I think, is to have a good development that's a complement to the community, but that all in the community can support. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Dawn Schofield. I live at one-five-three Ventana Boulevard, and I'm here tonight wearing two hats, that first as one of the residents within the statutory three-hundred-foot perimeter, and also as the president of the Ventana Dunes Property Owners Association. I'm gonna be quite candid, we had a board meeting of our association over the weekend. We feel a little bit ambushed. The few of us that I was able to poll who actually received the letters, mine, I don't believe, I cannot swear, but I don't believe it arrived until the end of last week. I didn't get it until Sunday personally. And you must excuse me, because this is my first function in this type of scenario in this jurisdiction, actually, in this state. My concern as the chairman of the group, and I was authorized to say this by the board, is that we feel rather deprived of details about the proposed development.
Okay, Mr. Schofield, you, you understand we're not hearing this tonight, right?
I understand that, sir, but all I, all I seek is that if it is continued, and I'm quite happy to see that, that will enable us to frame a much more coherent response to the whole thing in general. So as long as that delaying it until February doesn't prejudice our presentation in any way, then I'm happy to say with that.
Not at all.
You were provided contact information for the staff and for the applicant, were you not, in the letter, so that you can ask them?
Very, yes.
Okay.
My recommendation is to do that, see that they, see if they're up to their word with you.
Usually, they'll work with you.
Yeah.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody that didn't sign up wishes to speak? Understand that we're not hearing this item tonight, we're just talking about a continuance. Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is Michael Galvin. I'm the president of the Village of Blue Mountain Beach Condominium Association.
Have you been sworn in, sir?
Excuse me?
Were you sworn in?
Yes, I was. The only point we'd like to make, we appreciate the continuance to allow us time to work with the developer to resolve our, our differences. What we do want to bring to the attention of the board, as you look at this development, to recognize that over the years, the properties have changed dramatically. The original development order was two rectangular-shaped commercial pieces of property. These look like two putting surfaces. The two spurs originally were by the developer, part of a master association plan. The developer, through, as you know, many things happened over the time, utilized a reconfiguration of the land so he could get loans. We, what our objection to essentially is commercial land encroaching on residential property.
Okay.
We want our privacy, and that's our common, so as you've considered, we sure appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else that wishes to be heard? Don't see anybody, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to continue to the February meeting.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Smith, second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carries.
Commissioner, number five on the agenda is Fox Lake Residential. It's a major project. I'll ask Brian Underwood, the project manager, to brief the commission on this application.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is a major development order application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates, consisting of seventeen duplex buildings with a total of thirty-four units and seventy-six single-family home sites on plus or minus twenty-nine-point-five-eight acres, with a future land use of traditional neighborhood development, residential preservation, and a neighborhood infill. An amendment of the site to low-density residential future land use is being sought under separate application. The project is located north and east of the Santa Rosa Golf and Beach Club Golf Course in Dune Allen Beach.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Brian, you said it's, didn't the BCC hear this already?
Yes, sir, that was Tuesday night, and the board voted to transmit the proposed amendment to the Department of Economic Opportunity for Review. There will, there will be a thirty-day review window once received at D. There will be a thirty-day review window once received at DCA, or, excuse me, DEO.
So, there's been no decision on the land use?
That's correct.
Not by the state?
By the state, yeah.
There are no known code violations at the Fox Lake property, as indicated by correspondence from Walton County Code Enforcement. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the proposed project will be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, subject to the comments and conditions stated below being met, subject to a successful amendment of the future land use designation for the development site, and subject to approval of a petition for abandonment currently under review for easements located within the development site. A public comment has been received, and all correspondence is included as Exhibit A.
You know, Brian, if I can interrupt you just a little?
Yes, sir.
Mark, I don't know that I need to make this disclosure, but I'm gonna make it anyway since there's a letter in here from the Santa Rosa Golf and Beach Club. I am a member of that club. I don't know that it matters one way or the other, will not influence me one way or the other, but...
That's what we need to know. Thank you.
That having been made.
Again, the proposed project includes construction of seventeen duplex buildings and seventy-six single-family home sites on plus or minus twenty-nine point five-eight acres. The proposed abandonment application is under review. That will be heard at the Planning Commission hearing on February eleventh. The easements encompass a total of plus or minus point seven-five acres. The recommendation is a motion to approve the Fox Lake subdivision project, subject to all comments and conditions being satisfied, contingent upon approval of the requested large-scale land use amendment for the project site, and contingent upon approval of the requested easement abandonment by the Board of County Commissioners. There are six stated conditions of approval. I can read those if you would like.
Please do.
Yes, sir. All necessary permits must be obtained prior to initiation of construction. Number two, approximately three-point-six-seven acres of scrub habitat are to be preserved on-site, consistent with land development code allowances. Number three, approximately three-point-three-seven acres of scrub habitat are proposed to be bought out. If approved, a buyout payment in the amount of ninety-three thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars, ninety-one cents will be required at the time of development order approval. Additional fees may be required as a condition of approval. The determination is not yet complete. Number five, it is expected that a residential subdivision plat or plats would be proposed following completion of the approved development project. Six, the amendment of the future land use category of the development site to low-density residential, as requested in the application submit, package submitted by the agent, is required for the proposed plan of development. I'd like to add, number seven, approval of the petition for abandonment of the existing easements within the development site is also required.
When is that scheduled and being prepared?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission, we will advertise for that to be on the agenda on February eleventh.
Are we backwards here?
Yeah, seems like a little cart before.
I'm not being critical, you know, I'm just wondering why we're, there's a lot that hasn't been done, and we just got done talking about that on the last item.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, as these applications are made, we make, we do a pre-op with them, make sure that it's, it's ordered, we file the application. As far as the order of it, that's something that, that's, it's up to the applicant as they submit those to us.
I understand that, but it being put on the agenda for the Planning Commission is up to you, right? I mean, up to Planning Department?
Yes, sir. In part, I would like to address that. This resubmital was turned in shortly before the Christmas holiday, and planning staff went on vacation between Christmas and New Year's, so we advertised the project before we had reviewed, due to the timing of the holiday.
Go ahead. Question?
Yes, sir.
A bunch, but for right now. In my package, I noticed that there wasn't an environmental report, which typically there is, and in the comments, there was only, under Environmental Department, there was only a reference to some environmental comments by the Environmental Department. It's a fairly large piece on a really unusual topographic piece of ground that's, you know, our county's noted for, the Santa Rosa Ridge, and it's a really pristine area, and I was suspect of that, so I went out to the site to look at it myself. And just from, for staff question, why wasn't there an environment, wasn't there environmental report, or was it just missing from our package?
It was provided, and the Walton County Environmental Department, within Public Works, is the division that is responsible for reviewing the environmental assessment report. They did review the report and then provided their comments accordingly.
Well, their comments accordingly, and from my inspection and knowing the property as I've been and living out there and near there, and been on that property and selling property in that subdivision over the last thirty-something years, is that it is a really high piece of property, it's a very unusual environment out there. It has, because of its high elevation, a history of having gopher tortoises on it. I didn't see any rec, because I couldn't review the report, I couldn't see how they addressed that, if they said there were none, or if they said they were going to be relocated for the ones they found. Secondly, from my inspection of the property, there's, the property is dissected by drainage canals and lines, and I don't know how they're going to treat them, and are they're going to fill them, what their permitting is on that?
If, yes, sir. The site plan that's on the screen, it showed, I believe, shows the area of wetlands proposed for impact.
Do you know what they propose to do with the drainage canal that runs from, that drains those properties from the easement in Fox Lake?
I would like to let Mr. Burgess address that question.
Okay. And I guess, again, on the environmental issue, when I was out there, you know, I'm not an expert in the field, but I've been here a long time, and I've hunted these woods. I mean, I saw panther sign out there, you know, lots of deer sign, but I also found panther sign, and I was curious to find, I want to see the environmental report as how I'm getting toward this.
We can provide that to you.
That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Hey, David, what does a panther sign look like?
Well, it's a large footprint, like, about like that, with no nails in it, you know, so there's no claws in the pad, and it's not, it's different shape than a bear.
It wasn't a panther crossing sign, then, was it?
No, it was, it was the footprints. I didn't dig up any of the scatter taste it, but...
Okay.
I do have a question, too. I didn't notice a compatibility analysis in the report either.
I don't believe that is required for low-density residential projects.
I just saw several comments in the letters that we got about it, and there wasn't anything to address it, so...
Right.
Any other questions for staff right now?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burgess?
Good evening again, commissioners. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates. We are the agent to the developer and engineer of record on the project before you tonight, Fox Lake subdivision. I have been sworn. I'd like to start out just with an overview of the project, and then we can go into some of the topics that were discussed here briefly and into questions. I think Brian did a good job describing the project. I think most of the commissioners know this is located north of the Santa Rosa Golf, Golf Course, just north of Allen Loop Road, and south of Fairway Drive in the Santa Rosa Ridge subdivision. We have sought a low-density residential land use classification on this property and been voted for approval just Tuesday night by the Board of County Commissioners. The reason for that land use change was the property was previously designated traditional neighborhood development and infill. The vast majority of the property was traditional neighborhood development, which actually doesn't allow, but it requires, commercial development, public uses, civic uses within the development. In other words, you don't comply unless you provide those uses. We didn't see that as a, due to the location of the property, away from arterial roads like it is, as being, one, marketable for those type of developments, or, two, desirable, obviously, by the surrounding neighborhoods and the golf course. So, we decided, we took a look at what our goal was on this development, and low-density residential is a significant reduction in our property rights, but it still met our goals. So, we opted to make that land use change. The area of the property is twenty-nine point five-eight acres. One, it's made up of four parcels. One of the parcels is what we call the access parcel. It's the very northernmost parcel in the development, shown here. That was not part of the land use change. It will remain RPA, for obvious reasons. It retains no development potential on that parcel. It will only serve as access to the property. And it should be noted that that parcel has always been designated as a sixty-foot right-of-way. The previous owner to the property negotiated the purchase of that. So, there's clarity that it wasn't an easement, and he now, that it's now owned by the developer. There are seven-point-two-three acres of wetlands on the property, of which a portion of that is the ditch Mr. Kramer mentioned. We do intend to fill that ditch, which amounts to point four-five acres of wetlands. The obvious reasons for filling that ditch are continuity throughout the subdivision and access and circulation. We will be piping that with a thirty-six-inch pipe.
Only thirty-six inches?
Actually, that provides more flow capacity than what's actually allowed, given by the ditch. The reason for that's an upland cut, and it goes through a substantial hill, and the ability for water to flow at the elevation that it needs to is encumbered by the bottom elevation of that ditch. So, you only get that much water flowing through that ditch, or, you know, in heavy rainfalls, perhaps more, but certainly not the full depth of the ditch.
One of the things you don't get from pipes is you don't get absorption, you know, detention, retention. I mean, there's no, as that stream and canal goes forward, water is absorbed in the stormwater system out into the land and stuff. You know, get that, and that ditch, as I saw it, you know, was four feet of water wide. I mean, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not certainly going to argue with you about it, but I would think that, given the history of what we have in stormwater problems in this county, that erring on the side of caution, you know, for a thirty-six-inch pipe, I mean, how far, how far in of the existing flow do you feel that thirty-six-inch pipe exceeds the existing care?
I would have to look at our calculations, but we did base it on head loss in the pipe, and we typically try to limit that head loss to a foot of head loss or less.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, David.
That's fine. With the low-density residential designation, the allowable density on the property is one-hundred-and-fifteen units. We're proposing one-hundred-and-ten, with a mix of seventy-six single-family homes and thirty-four duplexes. Now, the duplexes count as two units, so those thirty-four units are actually, what would that be, seventeen duplex buildings. Our impervious area, I thought was worth noting, is only thirty percent of the property. We're allowed up to sixty percent, so we are half of what the allowable impervious area is on the property. I apologize that the environmental assessment was not included in your packets. There was a environmental assessment done, a number of comments corresponded back and forth between my office, the Environmental Consultants' office, and Walton County's Environmental Department. Spent a lot of time evaluating preservation. We are subject to preservation on this property and accommodating it.
Do you recall if there are really noted sightings of gopher tortoises on the site? And if so, were they being relocated?
There was no observation of gopher tortoises. I contacted Jeremy Reiser with E-Tech as our consultant, and I spoke to him today when I was forwarded the email to ask him about that. He said, one, it did not show up on the EFNA search for habitats, and he also commented that he did not see any threatened and endangered indications.
Mr. Kramer, will you ask a question? If you would get close to the microphone, I think they have a problem here.
I'm sorry about that, folks.
Lastly, Mr. Perry had a question about compatibility. This project started as a traditional neighborhood development and infill project, so we did do a compatibility analysis, and quite a detailed compatibility analysis. At the density that we were at, which was at that time one-hundred-and-seventy-two units, I believe, we're now down to one-hundred-and-ten, it was found to be compatible with the surrounding areas. Low-density residential does not require a compatibility analysis, but I thought it was important for the board to know that we did do one, and at a considerably higher density, it was found that we were compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Largely, in my opinion, due to, you can see on our drawings, I would like to call out to the board, the considerable buffering to the single-family homes to the north.
That'll all be left native?
It is done. We've got a preservation requirement on the site, as I noted, and that was a consciously made decision.
Right.
For that required preservation to also serve as a compatibility buffer to those neighbors to the north.
And I think that's a very good call. One of the things I wanted to ask you is, further along to the east there and along that boundary shared with the Santa Rosa Ridge subdivision, you show a large detention area, what, from my inspection on the site, proved to be a very high elevation. Are you going to dig down the entire hill to bring it down and then put your buffering in there so that you can get water to run to it, or are you actually having electrical pumps in the stormwater system that'll be pumping uphill to that, obviously, high-perking dirt?
Ash, do you refer to these ponds here?
Yes, the one on the north specifically.
Okay. These ponds are only, the property's divided into several drainage basins, and this high area here, which only includes these lots and the central access area, go to these lakes. Otherwise, you're right, you're trying to get harder flow uphill.
Right.
This area here is comparable in grade to the elevation of these ponds.
Actually, it's, where you've got the pond put up there, it's, I don't know, I didn't see a topo in my plans, and I didn't know what the current elevation is, but it looked to be just about as high as any piece on the property.
Yeah, the bottom of the pond is thirty-one, the top of the pond is thirty-seven.
And so, some of it'll have to be scraped down to get to that elevation, because it's, or do you think, or do you know what it is currently? I'm just trying to get a feel for what it's going to look like.
Those areas, the elevations, maybe thirty-eight.
Oh, not a lot.
The lake elevation here is thirty-two.
Okay. That tells me what I need to do. Thank you, sir. One other question. The, there's going to be a buffer between the pond and that, are you going to try to leave everything in that ten or twenty feet, whatever that is, between the edge of the pond and the north boundary of the subdivision above you, in native trees and stuff like that? It's not very wide.
Yes, in this area, we'll attempt to use as much native vegetation as possible in the...
Is there, and my next question would be on that, because it seems to be very narrow strip, and I, and you can explain to me why, is it, would it be possible to shift that whole pond without getting into any other buffers, slightly farther to the south and increase the buffer area between the existing subdivision in that, or have you pushed it to the limit where it's currently at?
The problem with doing that is there is a wetland area that...
Yeah, and you need twenty-five feet between there.
Basically, the discharge point.
Yeah.
Bowls out in that area, and so, it kind of pinches our ability to move that pond.
That's my question. I just wanted to be sure if there was any more room, you could increase the native buffer between this back of the subdivision. Between that, because that'll be taken, do you know what that distance between the lip of the retention pond and the edge of the subdivision is, that you're leaving there? Is that ten or twenty feet?
It is ten feet.
Or, is it, would it be possible to put up a fence at that area in there, just between there and the pond? Because it opens up such a, what's currently people have learned to enjoy, you know?
I don't, I don't see the fences being something that's prohibitive there.
Just in that area, right?
Just in that area along...
Along the edge of the pond. Along the edge of the pond. Where you would, because, I mean, with only a ten-foot buffer, and the native trees in there are hundred years old. So they're not, they're going to be, because of the canopy, it's going to be pretty sparse there. I know you're going to do some planting, but I just wanted to, if we couldn't increase the width of it any, because it'll take a while for any kind of plantings to catch up, would you be, would the developers be objectionable to a small fence along the backside of that pond to add for buffer?
That was the reason why we would object to that, it's not a fence.
No.
And I think it serves a good purpose as well as providing a secure area.
Just a question.
Now, it should be noted, even though this has hatched this preservation area in that ten feet, it's due to the fact that that's not a preservation habitat area. The native trees would be preserved in that area, you just can't claim it as preservation.
It's doubtful there'll ever be any standing water in there.
In those ponds?
Right.
Not at bottom elevation of thirty-five, no, sir.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that.
Dean, I have a question. And forgive me for not asking ahead of time, but the easements that you guys are sought or seeking to be abandoned, they run, if I'm not mistaken, across what you have marked as Lot Thirty? Then they go south across what's now marked as lots Forty-seven, Forty-six, Forty-five, Forty-four, Forty-two. Is that right?
That is correct. The clarity, it's on the site plan, it's the dash easements running north through the property here and east to west through the property here.
Would you agree that if, for whatever reason, those easements don't get abandoned, you're going to have to do a pretty major redesign? And the reason I'm telling, I'm masking that, you're probably not aware, but there's a pretty, and the county's a defendant in a lawsuit involving the abandonment of other easements which give access to, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the road, lots, I think it's seven, six, seven, ten, and eleven. And I'm concerned if that lawsuit is somehow successful, those folks, and then you get your L-shaped easements abandoned, those folks are going to be somehow landlocked by the operation of the county. And I'm have some, I have some concerns about recommending approval of a plat at this point without knowing the outcome of that.
I would offer that, I disagree that it would landlock those lots which are located to the east of us. These easements actually only provide access to the subject property. The properties to the east of us are accessed through the same access that we have, which is off of Allen Luke Road, one of these easements. Our legal access comes from Allen Luke Road on Bunker Place, north of this easement. And then we travel west to access our property. These parcels enjoy the same access that we do as far as utilizing those same easements that we do. There's no reason for them to travel west into our property, across our property, then east.
I think, and I'm not arguing, but I think the lawsuit involves those accesses. So it's possible those to the west would be landlocked if those, if they're successful in lawsuit and that's abandoned. I mean, I know that's speculative.
Right. But my point is, there's no way to get to our easements, this L-shaped easements that we're asking to abandon, if there's not access from the south, because they're all accessed from those same easements that are under, that are part of the lawsuit.
Is it the developer's intent, not to take away from the part, I'd have to agree with you more than Mark on this one.
Well, it's hard for me to say.
I don't know how it affects the precedent and what's going on in the lawsuit. And I won't take anything away from that. That'll be a problem, you'll have to test. But in the reality of the situation, God willing, that you get that done, is it developer's intent to take Fox Bunker Way privately develop it and pave it into the bottom of the subdivision so there's connectivity between Santa Rosa Ridge and this area? Should there be a pinch point at three ninety-three and Ridge Road?
That is not our intent, because actually Bunker Place is a private easement.
Right.
And we wanted to maintain this south access as a secondary access. That's part of the reason that we proposed to pave this road in gravel, make it somewhat less desirable and reduce speeds on it and so forth, to limit the traffic coming through here. We did not see, this is a good idea, to make another connection from Thirty-A over to three ninety-three. In our community meeting with the neighbors, they absolutely didn't want that, to see that, because all of a sudden their road becomes a boulevard and all the Thirty-A traffic. So we did the gravel road and we also will gate the project. We proposed to gate the project, again, to eliminate that thoroughfare.
Well, the reason I bring it to your attention and not being privy to the information, not being privy to the information at the public meetings, whether they were with Santa Rosa Ridge or the people to the southeast and west of you, is because our comprehensive plan urges us at every chance as a planning commission to seek connectivity. And so I just wanted to see if those issues have been addressed and what the wishes of the community, and I appreciate that.
And I think it's worth noting that all gates in Walton County, the fire department has the ability to open in the instance of a hurricane or evacuation where it's required. Those gates would be opened and it would be available for an emergency situation.
Dean, I got a question. There was a comment in the environmental comments about a twenty-five-foot secondary wetland protection zone. And there was some rear building setback lines that were affecting that. Did that get addressed?
Yes, we've removed, well, the secondary wetland protection zone that was in, what was the comment?
She, aid of the construction plans, said a twenty-five-foot secondary wetland protection zone. Please relocate the building setback line outside the twenty-five-foot secondary wetland protection zone, a sufficient distance to allow for someone to construct a home without clearing the twenty-five-foot secondary wetland protection zone.
Okay. The, that's an instance where the secondary wetland protection zone is in part within the setback of the property. There is no requirement of the code to place that entirely outside of building setbacks. I understand it's a request and it prob, if I remember correctly, it was worded as that they request that it be done.
Please address the following comments, as it says.
All right. It only, I think it only refers to just a few of the lots, like fifty-three, 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 but I could be wrong about that. Is that all it addresses?
I don't know.
Those four lots?
Fifty through Fifty-three?
Yeah, I see that's the lot lines encroach into the twenty-five-foot setback.
Those lots back up to the wetland, those are these lots right here?
Yes.
And it's typical and common to place the jurisdictional buffer inside of those lots. It's a buffer. So the intent is your, the jurisdictional secondary buffer line becomes your rear setback. I didn't see a need to provide a setback from a setback.
Because it would be addressed on the plat as a setback?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Were there any other lots? Were there any referencing what Commissioner Perry said? Is there, are there any other lots besides those four that I mentioned that might be affected by that?
No, the other lots that back up to the, to the wetlands basically have the retention ponds between.
Right.
Those lots. It should be noted that lots Fifty-three, Fifty-three are considerably deep lots.
Yeah.
And I just don't see a need, again, like I said, there's not a need or a requirement by the code to provide a setback from a secondary setback.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Burgess?
Oh, I'm sure I do. But not right at this time.
Be happy to answer any other questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to mention that with me, I have Mr. Rick Borst, consultant for the development. He will speak to any kind of compatibility questions, analysis of the surrounding neighborhoods and so forth. And Ms. Debbie Danton is our traffic consultant.
Speaking of that, Ms. Danton, is it Danton?
Yes.
Could you address that to the board and let us know how, since everything pretty much is going to dump out right at the intersection of Ridge Road and three ninety-three, and whether a warrant study has been done at that intersection? And if it was done, at what time of year was it done?
Yes.
That kind of stuff. Please.
Debbie Danton, D-A-N-T-I-N, I have been sworn in. I'm a registered professional engineer, been practicing traffic engineering for twenty-seven years, located out of Tallahassee. And we did do a detailed traffic analysis at the intersection of Ridge Road and County Road three ninety-three. We did it, analyzed the before condition, adding the Fox Lake traffic. And then we also did an additional analysis, adding Ridge Walk Development, which is on the east side of County Road Thirty-A, County Road three ninety-three, making it from a three-legged intersection to a four-legged intersection. And we started off by conducting traffic counts, new traffic counts, December eighth, twenty fifteen. And then we looked to factor those counts to a peak season. And we ended up, because of the Draper Lake Bridge closure and the rerouting of traffic on County Road Thirty-A that now goes up three ninety-three, the traffic volume, instead of an average annual increase on County Road three ninety-three of approximately two percent, looking from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fourteen, the traffic is.
Two percent annually?
Annually. On average, it was actually less than two percent. But yet, the traffic has increased from twenty fourteen to the count we took in twenty fifteen by thirteen percent. And that's probably, you know, a good ten percent increase because of that roadway closure. And so we did factor the counts along Ridge Road to consider the peak summer season, increased those volumes by approximately thirty percent. So using those numbers, the high numbers along County Road three ninety-three and the Ridge Road factored counts, it's a very conservative analysis. And what we did is we did a signal warrant study, looking at it as a three-legged intersection or a four-legged intersection. And the signal warrants based on the manual on uniform traffic control devices, national standards used for signals, it was nowhere close to meeting traffic volume warrants.
When you say signals, you mean flashing lights and/or stoplights?
I looked at a traffic signal, correct. And we also looked at turn lanes, northbound, southbound, left and right turn lanes into Ridge Road as well as the Ridge Walk Development. And looked at the warrants based on the national federal highway report records that are used typically by DOT and local governments. And turn lanes were not warranted under these conditions.
Did the topography, was the topography analyzed to consider that as well?
Yes, it was. And the one thing I wanted to mention, we also looked at, before I get to that issue, we also looked at a highway capacity analysis, looking at the overall movements of the intersection before and after the traffic. And, you know, particularly, we're looking at the Ridge Walk, Ridge Road approach coming out onto three ninety-three as well as the movements turning into the Santa Rosa Ridge neighborhood before and after. And the level of service and the delay of vehicles is, the delays going to slightly increase, but the level of service continues to remain at level of service B. Actually, when you add the fourth leg on the east side of Ridge Road for the Ridge Walk Development, that actually is the, is the traffic that made it operate at a level of service C, which is still operationally acceptable.
You base that on their traffic analysis numbers that they generated?
I added in, yes, I did. And I added it in as a four-legged intersection and reanalyzed it. And it increased the delay by a few seconds, you know, but overall, you know, it still operates fairly well. And then the last thing we looked at is just an overall safety issue at the intersection. And that's where you have, we're at the top of a vertical crest curve. You know, it's amazing that it's one of the biggest hills in the county that I've seen. And so looking at the travel speeds, it's currently posted at forty-five, thirty-five miles per hour. Immediately north on County Road three ninety-three, north of Ridge Road, it changes to forty-five miles per hour. And if you're heading southbound towards Thirty-A, the grades are much steeper. And so traffic is going to slow down because it's posted at thirty-five and then it goes to twenty-five heading towards Thirty-A. Going northbound, it's thirty-five at the Ridge Road crest intersection, and then immediately it changes to forty-five. So what I observed is the volumes going northbound in particular are going a little bit faster than what they should. And so what we would, we looked at like stopping sight distance, visibility coming in and out of both the Ridge Road and the Ridge Walk, and all that was met. But it was concerning about the speeds northbound and if there's a stopped vehicle turning left into Ridge Road.
Did you make any recommendations to the developer from your, based on your warrant analysis?
Well, what we made a recommendation is for the county to look at relocating at least the speed limit further north of forty-five miles per hour, getting periodic enforcement out there, looking at ensuring that that sight distance, the stopping sight distance is adequate at the top of that curve. And then there's a few things that you can do. You can put stopping, stop flashing lights, you can put signs, you know, I'm not a huge, I, we install signs all the time as traffic engineers, but realistically, signs are often ignored. But there's signs per the manual on uniform traffic control devices about hills blocking the view and things like that that you can post. So we did make some recommendations just from a safety standpoint that we've been, you know, working, talking to the county about and have not heard any feedback from them yet on those recommendations.
And your recommendation for the speed reduction was from, anything from southbound?
Well, southbound, they're going up the hill at a steeper grade and it changes to thirty-five miles per hour before you get to Ridge Road. And so it's based on the field review and the traffic conditions, and that's, I did not make recommendations.
Did you work with Mr. Powell on this, I guess? Chance Powell with the county?
I've been in touch with Chance Powell, yes, and also their consultant, Preble Rish.
And did they concur with your analysis?
I'm waiting to hear.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, since the chairman stepped out, any other commissioners, any other questions to the applicant? All right, until the chairman gets back, we'll take a ten-minute recess and join right back in with public comment. All right? Ten minutes, we'll be back on at seven o'clock. I figure if he had to go, he won the only one.
Will everybody get back to their places and we'll get started again. Real quick before we do get started, someone found a wallet in the back of the room that's been given to a deputy. David Wentz, I believe, is the ID inside of it. William Wentz, I'm sorry. If anybody knows who he is, have him get a hold of the deputy. Mr. Kramer, you were here when we left off, where are we at?
I adjourned the meeting for ten minutes. For ten minutes.
Public comments.
We're in public comments?
Public comments, yes, sir.
We've got a stack of people who have signed up. And I'll go through this stack. If anybody did not sign up, wishes to speak, I'll get you at the end. I would ask you to please be mindful, there's a lot of people here and a lot of people want to talk on this topic, so. topic. So, while what you have to say is very important, if we could keep the repetition down, that would help us a great deal. First person who signed up is Amanda Schuette.
Hi. Amanda Schuette, S-C-H-U-E-T-T-E, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I'll try and keep it brief. As you've already sort of figured out from the earlier presentation, this project is barreling ahead like a freight train and is not taking the time or the design to really consider what is being proposed, how it fits with the neighborhood, and a variety of problems. They want you to believe that it is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood because they only have a certain amount of density per acre. But the reason for that supposed low density is that a great deal of the site is preservation requirement, wetlands, and roads. I'm sure many of the people that are going to speak next will give you many, many more reasons to deny this project. But right now, it is a poorly designed spec project with tiny lots that is being forced into a neighborhood without regard for the environment, for the community, for drainage, or for public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's keep the applause down, please. Susan Bryant.
I'm Beth.
Judy Henninger.
I'm Beth.
We might get through this quicker than I thought. What's that?
Yeah, thank you.
Matt Clark.
My name is Matt Clark. I am the president of the Santa Rosa Golf and Beach Club. And I was sworn in, I saw everybody else do that. Couple of things that I need to mention to you. When this project first came to light, which probably was a year ago or better, our two concerns as the golf course and the golf club was, where's the water going to go? Because all of the water runs through our golf course, across the road, and empties in Oyster Lake, every bit of it. And second was, what about the golfers who cross Bunker Place Road? At the time, we did, we were doing 33,000 rounds of golf at our golf course. And that number has not been updated in the last nine months. But that's 66,000 golfers crossing Bunker Place, because it crosses on two different areas. That's 66,000 golfers walking across that bunker place. And we have a concern that a lot of these people in this subdivision are going to use Bunker Place, because it's just the back door. I mean, how many times do people go out the front door of their house and the back door? And Bunker Place becomes a back door in the alley and loop. And with what's going on with the development across 393, coming out at the intersection, and y'all talked about it, there's going to be a lot of traffic right there. The connectivity, I heard that term used, we also have a concern because there's another piece of property owned by Mr. Pearson, and our options on this property is about the same size. And his only access is Bunker Place. Now, we've had nice conversations with Trustmark, and we are closely talking about some possible remedy for the protection of the golfers and the maintenance people that use Bunker Place. And by the way, currently, garbage trucks, you know, none of those people use Bunker Place. Everybody on Bunker Place takes their garbage out to alley and loop and puts it in another spot. So, we just have some real concerns. I, after hearing the discussion about the water, I still have some concerns about that. Because I've lived most of my life on Lake Eiffel, and it's engineered by the Corps of Engineers, they're supposed to be the best in the world. In 26 years, we've had three 100-year floods there. So, that's a lot quicker than 100 years. So, we have some real concerns, and we want to work with whatever this group decides to do. But we do need to take care of the safety for our people. And we are trying to, we've got an agreement to enter into agreement, but we're going to have to massage that. That was sent to me on January the 7th. I was out of town, I did not get it until Monday. And I bowled meets, and I couldn't sign anything.
Is that for the tunnels under?
We've, we've sort of talked about not doing that, because it creates just a real problem. And it's an expensive solution. We've talked about a teardrop, a way that traffic would go around one way and another, and it gives an island in the middle for people crossing, in case there was a lot of traffic, there's a place for them to take refuge. It's, I haven't seen it, I'm not an engineer, but that's what we're just talking about. So, we're just in a talking stage. So, I just want to make you aware of those facts.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, may I ask you a couple of questions?
You can certainly try.
How long you been at the club, or been a member?
I've been a member for four years.
And you golf?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Is there ball traffic across, I'm not a golfer. Is there ball traffic across Bunker Place, as well as foot traffic and cart traffic?
Depends on who's swinging a golf ball.
Hold on now.
I don't mean to make light of it, but if it's me, you better look at it.
It could be on hole number three. No, yeah, hole number three. It could be.
It's not designed that way, right?
No, it's not, no.
Okay. And are you familiar with whether there are any underground utilities currently in the under Bunker Place?
I have no idea.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arno Lutz.
Is that what it is?
Rain, is it raining?
Lutz is the last name, Mr. Lutz.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Arno Lutz, A-R-N-O-L-U-T-Z. I live 568 Ridge Road, Santa Rosa Beach.
Were you sworn in?
I've got-
Were you sworn in, sir?
Pardon me?
Were you sworn in?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
I've got several concerns. First of all, from what I hear, that you have not seen, or the material that was presented by the developer has not provided you with a traffic study, or a, an environmental impact. Is that correct?
Go ahead, David.
We did not get the full traffic analysis, nor the full environmental study. We got a synopsis of both of those in our report we got from staff. Staff analyzes those, and we rely on them to give it. But sometimes, like as myself this evening, I had a question regarding the environmental report, because I didn't see remarks about whether or not endangered species were sighted, and whether or not, if they were sighted, whether they were being moved. And that's why I brought that up, and I really wanted to get more in depth. And I asked, that's why I asked Ms. Denton about the traffic analysis. So, no, sir, we did not, in our packages, we didn't get the full analysis of either one of those. We got a synopsis.
You got a synopsis from your committee, or from the developer?
From our staff.
From your staff, okay. Well, synopses are good, but sometimes seeing the real thing is, you know, and I appreciate you going out to the property and seeing the way it is right now, because it's very pristine. As Mr. Clark said, the water from that area drains down alongside of the golf course, and then these golf courses out to Oyster Lake. Now, that property that we're talking about is sandy. A lot of the water perks down into the groundwater. So, the amount of water that gets out into Oyster Lake is less than what it will be when you develop that piece of property, because of the roads and such, as you can understand. So, I'm concerned about what's going to happen with the water flow, whether it's going to come out on the golf course, whether it's going to back up into your development, whether it's going to overflow Oyster Lake. Another concern I have is the traffic. Right now, we have single-story houses, mostly two people living in it. There's a lot of houses there, only one person. Putting a development like this in there, you're going to have at least two people, and probably children, probably school buses, and delivery trucks. The traffic is going to be a tremendous impact on what you have right now. And if you're putting 110 units in there, I would say, I would say it's safe to say that your traffic is going to double, if not more. The people that live in Santa Rosa Ridge, they use the street. We don't have sidewalk. So, when we go out and we jog, or we walk for exercise, or we walk our animals, or the kids want to play, it's the street that they use, not the sidewalks. If you're going to bring all this traffic from that 110 homes through Santa Rosa Ridge, it's not going to be the same type of community that we have now. And keeping in mind that not only this development, Santa Rosa Ridge is not completely filled out. So, you've got to figure on the lots that are still empty, they're going to be developed, and you're going to have more traffic coming out there. So, I think it'd be good to make sure that they do a viable traffic study, that they check with the environment to make sure that the water is going to be contained within that less than 30 acres, and not overflow onto other people's property. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mary Lutz.
I think, thank you. I think my husband expressed our feelings.
Thank you. Robert? Bob Hudson.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. I'm a resident of 157 Fairway Drive. When you look at this map over here, and you notice the little dogleg that goes up and connects to Fairway Drive, my home is the house to the east of that. I was the prior owner of the 30 feet that has been sold to Trustmark Bank. That 30 feet is a dedicated public easement, contrary to what the maps that you say, they show private utility easement. I want to make sure everybody understands that. That is not part of Fox Lake. That is a platted lot within Santa Rosa Ridge Fairway Edition. So, anything that's done there is subject to the covenants of Fairway Drive, Fairway Edition. I understand you don't enforce covenants. Believe me, I've heard that more than one time. But I want you to know that I understand how covenants are enforced.
Excuse me, Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
The 30 feet you spoke of, aren't there 230 feet?
Yes, there's 230 feet.
Yeah, just to clear that up.
And I, when we bought that, our property, and built, Mr. Gary Towne was the owner of this property at that point in time, and he intended to cut a road through. My driveway faces the 30 feet, because according to him, we were going to open that road up within six months of the time we got there. So, our driveway is within that 30 feet at this point in time. My wife doesn't like that, because I'm smart enough to know anything I put in public easement, guess what? Somebody can come by, and the county can come by, or whoever. So, we have a gravel driveway. And so, we were very interested in trying to get that road there, because it's, we bought it, we knew that road was there, we knew there was a utility easement that was there. We were banking that that was going to be there. That's the way the house was constructed. I have a handout that I want to give to you, because I want to talk about several things. I don't see how they can include partial 31. Okay. I don't see how they can include partial 31. It would appear to me they would have to replat Fairway Edition, if they were going to do that.
I'll leave three more.
There were several things that were said about this development, and I want to make sure that you understand, there's an agreement that I have with Trustmark Bank and its successors and assignees that deal with where certain things are and where they're to be. I understand you don't enforce those. I do know how to enforce those. But you have in the second page, the first page is the platte recorded in Walton County, showing that 66, that 60 feet is being public utility easement, if you read the dedication. And I understand what I've given you is small. Page two of the agreement that I have and signed with Trustmark Bank states that any gated entrance must be south of the northern boundary. And that was, sure. And that's worded in that way very specifically. My bedroom is on the east side of my house, and my neighbor's bedroom is on the west side. And we were very concerned that any traffic would go right down the middle, traffic lights, car lights, and all of those things would not be deflected or pointed into our bedrooms at night. This is 117 plus. It appears that a lot of it's going to be short-term rentals eventually. So, there's going to be a lot of traffic in and out of there. So, my concern, and I've raised this to Trustmark and to Dean with Emerald Coast, I don't believe they're in compliance. If they choose not to, fine. I understand if they choose not to, and I understand where my recourse is. Second thing I want to talk to you about is flooding in this section. The third thing shows two pictures of Fairway Edition in front of my home. If you'll notice, there's a no-wake site. The water there is two and a half feet deep. The county came in once this occurred, after we moved there. If you'll notice, there's a portajani sitting in the picture, that floated there from another side that was under construction. The county came in and installed a drainage across this very easily. And I'm very concerned that that be maintained, because if it clogs up, you'll see what happens in the next picture. The road called Fairway Drive was built by Mr. Towns, the developer, with agreement with the county. He did certain things, and the county provided asphalt or something of that nature. There is no base under this road. It's sand. So, when you start moving all of this construction equipment up and down this road, hauling dirt in, hauling dirt out, I'm very concerned that this road is going to collapse. It took me two years, appearing before the Board of County Commissioners, to get this road repaved. It's now been repaved 10 years. And I don't know that it can handle this traffic without severe damage. And I don't know how the county's going to feel when I start coming back screaming and hollering one more time about that. There was some statements made about an environmental study, that there were no gopher tortoises that are there. I invite each and every one of you to my backyard, and I'll show you two gopher tortoise habitats in my backyard. How many are back behind me, I don't know. My wife and I have seen panthers in our backyard. We have deer in our backyard on a consistent basis. They eat my wife's roses. They love them. Mr. Abeki, my neighbor on the other side, they love his Indian hawthorn. So, we have those there. My grandchildren love seeing them. Okay, let's try and do what we can. The last page that you have is my idea of how to resolve what I think are two issues. It appears to me that when you look at their plan, there is a gated, I guess they're calling it exit, that comes off of this road and goes into their main road. You'll see that if you were to look at a map, you can see where I've white, I'm not an architect, engineer, drawer, but I can do a little bit. And I think what that does, right now, if you'll notice, this road would shine light straight in my- straight in my bedroom at night. This one that goes out, and why it has to be there, I don't know, would shine lights in my next-door neighbor's bedroom every time someone uses that exit. The agreement says, and I agree, maybe I messed up, I said if you put an entrance, it had to be 75 feet. I don't know how far, I think this one is not 75 feet south of the northern boundary on my property. But they could relocate that, in my opinion, and solve that problem. And if it's 65 feet, I wouldn't scream and holler, but if it's under 75, not south, without the other one, I've got some problems with that.
Mr. Hudson? Those things that I... Do you think that on either side of the entrance, wherever they went, and if it's approved, that vegetation would be preferable to fencing to keep those lights?
From my standpoint, yes, vegetation would be. In that neighborhood, there are a lot of Leland Cypress trees that are there. I've lived in that house now since 19, 2001. I've suffered through hurricanes. Fences don't stand up well in hurricane winds in there, but Leland Cypress trees tend to do better. But that's my preference. I don't know about Mr. Ebbeke, I don't know about the other people, but when you were talking about fencing along that drainage or retention pond, I would prefer, part of my land is on that as well, and I'd prefer Leland Cypresses or something to block that, yes.
Typically, the drainage that's there at that location there, when I pulled up there and checked it, there's a drain.
Yes.
Right there, a small drain.
24-inch.
Right. That probably during that flooding probably was covered by debris and stuff like that, right?
Your bet your luck.
And so you were out there continually trying to keep that clean so that the road would run down?
If I'm out of town, and you have a big rain, there'll be water.
Your recommendation as a living resident there would be to the developers that that drain that's there, and that'll be running down into the exit?
I think they show two, David. I think they show one on one side and one on the other, is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that water there. I really don't. I think they've done that. I do know that if it's not done correctly, that place fills up like a bowl.
Well, I'd like to see it done in excessive correctly, personally.
Yes. And I'm not an engineer, and I'm not challenging that. But I will show you, I didn't make big copies because I didn't really understand, this is a picture of my front yard two months ago, when I was out of town. Came back in town, and that's what we had. This is my backyard the same day. And so when you say that this five-foot wide ditch, five-foot deep ditch and seven-feet wide it places, is it's going to carry the water? Because this water came from that ditch.
Oh, backed up from Fox Lake?
Absolutely. He's correct. There's a bottleneck. It goes uphill. And so what I'm saying is done, not done correctly, I don't see how 36-inch pipes are going to do it, but they're the engineers, and they're the ones. This project stands the chance of being Driftwood Estates 2. And I say that because of ingress and egress. You have 117, I think, Ms. Nielsen, is that correct, lots in Santa Rosa Ridge?
No, correct.
She's going to do all of that. And then you're adding all of these others there, and you're saying one entrance and one exit. The neighborhood had a power at one point in time, and it was a concern how people were going to get out. I don't know how this project is before you tonight. There are so many if-and's, whats, and what could be. I don't know how you can effectively do it, but I'm not against the development. I just want it done correctly. I want to protect myself, I want to protect my wife, my family, and the neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. I think I'm probably the youngest person close anyway. I don't know.
Yeah.
It's basically a very quiet neighborhood. You're fixing to tear it all to pieces if you're not careful. Thank you, sir. Yes.
I'm assuming you want to move these documents into evidence? Is it today? Okay, and it's pages one through five, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. The others, I didn't bring, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Yes. Thank you.
Charles?
Ebbeke.
There you go.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Charles Ebbeke, E-B-B-E-C-K-E. I live at 143 Fairway Drive. My property comes right up against the proposed...
Sir, were you sworn in?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, sir. I'd like to reiterate much of what my neighbors have already said about the neighborhood. I have them all down in the text that's being passed out to you. I also want to thank Mr. Kramer for coming out to the neighborhood. It's not often that you get a public official to walk the neighborhood that's under consideration, and I certainly, certainly appreciate that. There's nothing like actually seeing what the place looks like. I've had the pleasure of living there for over six years. My neighbors have received these flooding problems year after year, especially with high amounts of rain in a short period of time. And it does take a few days for it to drain down. I happen to be one of the highest points that was talked about earlier, where the retention ponds are going to be directly behind me. And I hope that by altering that terrain, that it doesn't influence my drainage. I'm very, very happy that the developers have considered changing the density. I think that's a plus factor. I'm not against people building on property that they own, certainly. But at the same time, I'm very, very, very concerned about the amount of traffic that's going to run in and out of that proposed development. I see no strategic point at where this traffic is going to be able to exit the southern portion. Somebody made the comment about not wanting a boulevard running to 30A. Well, I'm going to tell you, it looks like to me, like Fairway Drive is going to become a boulevard, and I really do not want to see that. We have no sidewalks. People get out, they walk their dogs, they have a great time. It's basically a retirement community. It's very, very quiet. The wildlife, I have as many as four or five deer every morning. I'm not happy that they eat my bushes, but they grow back. But they're beautiful. I have herons. I see migratory turtles all the time in the spring and in the early fall. Big ones, going back and forth to Fox Lake, across the back of my property, across my lawn. I have physically, and will testify to this, have seen a Florida panther come through my neighbor's property next door and across Fairway Drive. I've seen numerous raccoons, herons, et cetera, et cetera. It would be better to be a wildlife preserve than a development. There's no doubt about that. So those are some of the things that I'm concerned about. In addition to the traffic going out on Ridge Road onto 393, I dispute what's said about that traffic study, because I drive through that neighborhood every day, and I know in the high season that I can barely get out on 393. I'll have to wait five, six, eight minutes sometime. And when I turn left to go north, to go westbound on 98, I've sat there for three to four cycles of red light operation trying to make a left turn. What is needed without a doubt is a left-turn arrow. Heading southbound on 393, when you get up to that ridge, we need a right-turn lane, so that you can get off of 393 and get onto Ridge Road, if this proposed development goes on. That's my...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Catherine Fitzsimmons?
My name is Catherine Fitzsimmons, F-I-T-K-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E. Last name is Fitzsimmons, F-I-T-Z-S-I-M-M-O-N-S. I was sworn in.
Thank you.
I like to circle the handles and ask that there's only one shoot. Let's just be brief. Just as a point of clarity, I'm the managing partner for V S J LLC, and we own 10 acres immediately to the east of this proposed 29-acre development. Pearson does not. We have been in two years' worth of litigation with, he'd like to own it, I think, but does not at the moment. V S J LLC holds title on that. We object to the development order that's requested, because the development would eliminate access to V S J LLC's Lot 7. Trustmark is, and on the back of that handout is a map with our property highlighted as it abuts the proposed development. Trustmark is seeking the abandonment of easements placed on Lots 8 and 9, which benefit the adjacent property of V S J LLC and may be needed for access, especially given the current litigation in which the county is a party, over other nearby easements. Your comments were incorrect earlier regarding that access. Considerations, number one, V S J LLC owns Lots 7 and 10, which are immediately adjacent to Lots 8 and 9, which are owned by Trustmark. The easements which serve all of these lots were created by the U.S. government when the lots were created, so that all of the lots would have access to public roads. The other easements to the south of Lots 10, 11, and 12, also owned by V S J LLC, are in litigation, with various owners of properties claiming that the V S J LLC cannot use the easements for some or all of its lots, that one of the easements is only 10 feet wide, and/or that the easements were previously abandoned or terminated. County attorney, Mr. Davis, is aware of the litigation, because Walton County is a defendant in that litigation. Depending upon the outcome of that litigation, the only easements left may be over Lot 8 and 9. A case was filed yesterday to have the court declare that Trustmark and the county cannot stop V S J LLC's use of these easements to access its properties. Because these easements over Lots 8 and 9 are not disputed, V S J LLC may need to access them to get to Bunker Place Drive. If these easements are eliminated, and if V S J LLC loses the litigation, V S J LLC will own 10 acres that will be landlocked by the actions of the county, which the county should not do. V S J LLC's property is zoned according to this site plan for neighborhood infill. It will be impossible to infill without access. The ordinance that must be passed by the county in order to eliminate these easements must find that the abandonment will not leave an adjacent parcel landlocked. The county cannot find that here. Please deny the development order as requested. Respectfully submitted, V S J LLC. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Fitzsimmons, can I ask you a question or two, just so I could get a better grip on this?
Yes, I cannot answer on the litigation, because it's ongoing now, if it, but try, take a shot.
Well, maybe you could, maybe this is kind of a general question.
Sure.
Are the easements on Lots 14 and 15, between Lots 14 and 15, are they subject to the part of the litigation as well?
Lots 14 and 15, no, they are not. The, when you say that, are they subject, I'm not sure...
Are they, are they in, are they questioned in the litigation?
Yes.
The subject?
Part of, you know, I'm going to back up here. Our attorney is Ted Borowski.
She's not prepared to answer, and I don't think she should.
No, and I really not. I can, you know, it's not kitchen-table conversation, and I would hate to answer what I think is correct and be incorrect, because I know how important this is to everybody.
Well, your testimony says, you know, that, ah, okay. If you can't answer, you can't answer.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vorbeck? You've been waiting patiently.
Yes, I have. Patient? I never... Yeah, patiently. He says I don't have any patience.
You've got about a minute and a half.
Oh, I'll try to be quick, real quick. From my point of view, first off, my name is Gary Vorbeck, V-O-R-B-E-C-K, and I'm an attorney from Destin, Florida. And I'm here representing a group, a group called the Friends of the Ridge, and it's neighbors of the adjoining subdivision. And I'm going to be helped in my discussion presentation night by John Heiser and Mary Nielsen, if they'd come up, and they've both been sworn in under oath. And they can introduce themselves to you. But first off, before we bring up issues that some have already been brought up, but are very important, and I think I want to bring up a very important point, is what's been just discussed by the lady here prior to, is you have issues in front of you that you can, this thing cannot be decided by this board. I would turn to the county attorney and say, these are things that you don't want to be approving land use changes or land development orders, recommending them to the Board of County Commissioners, without these issues being decided. And so I think we do have, and I think Chairman mentioned that before, the cart before the horse. But one of the main ones, not only with the abandonments required, and it's my understanding, if these abandonments are not granted, then this project will have to be totally redesigned. And then this board's already stated how you don't like to abandon easements. It's been, I mean, it was stated on the record here earlier tonight, and that hasn't been brought to the, from the board, so we got the cart before the horse. But one of the main reasons too, is, and it's very disturbing to me, is the Board of County Commissioners passed Tuesday, voted to transmit their request for a land use change. It's fundamental for any quasi-judicial board such as this, that you judge a project and whether the land use complies with a comprehensive plan and a land development code. It's impossible for you to judge that, because the land use change has not been granted by the Board of County Commissioners. It has to go to the D E O. D E O then gives their recommendation, and then the board holds a public hearing, and then passes an ordinance, either doing it or not doing it. I've been involved in situations where it went to, the board asked for transmittal or recommended transmittal to D E O, D E O approved it, come back to the Board of County Commissioners, and they denied it. So we're not at a point right now for you to hear really any testimony at all. It shouldn't have been, this shouldn't even be where it's at. So I'm going to turn this over to the county attorney and his recommendations, because I really sincerely believe, from a professional point of view, this shouldn't go any further.
Well, I was going to wait till the close of the evidence, but if you're going to call me out, yeah, I have some serious concerns about moving this project forward without that D E O and the land change being complete. But set that aside, even if you made a contingent, I have real concerns about what would, what would happen if there is no abandonment of those easements. And quite frankly, that's entirely within the realm of possibility. And then we've approved a project that's going to have to be completely redesigned. I don't think it's particularly fair to the applicants, quite frankly, to go forward at this point until that, until that issue and the land use change is complete. I am familiar with the V S J litigation, only because the county was named as a defendant. I wish I'd have brought the file with me, because I do have some concerns despite Dean's testimony, and I respect Dean's opinion, but I do have some concerns about the possibility of the landlock situation happening. The abandonment is scheduled to be heard by you guys in February, I believe.
Gary, are you making the claim that this is a procedural argument? You're not making a substantive argument, you're making...
No, this is what I'm, right now it's making a procedural argument, yes.
Okay, so if I understand your procedural argument, you're saying that we cannot, as a board here, or as a commissioner, hear the comments from the public right now, or we can't consider the comments?
I would, I think it's, that right now, that it's fundamentally wrong for you to be able to hear, hear this as in a quasi-judicial form, and then make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, when you're charged with making sure that this project is compliant with a comprehensive plan, and it does not even have the proper land use classification yet, has not been voted on and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So you can't do your job.
Well, if I understand what you're saying, then you're saying that because we have a procedural problem, we can't even get to the substantive part of the problem?
Technically, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, I'm trying to do this as best I can, hearing this for the first time. So if we can't get to the substantive part of the problem, is there anything else for us to hear tonight that would help us, as long as the procedural part of the argument has not been satisfied?
I think you're just going to have to rehear a lot of it anyway. I mean, because I think you fundamentally have an issue here, and I don't think Mark disagrees with it.
Mark, do you, do you agree with that?
I actually do agree with it. And it's hard for me to agree with Gary, I just want to...
Real quick, and I got a question, maybe for you, Mr. Davis, because this came up at the very beginning of this topic.
Well...
And I asked if we could...
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. My thought was, is we would at least hear the applicant and hear the objections, and then at the end, I was going to recommend you continue it, because quite frankly, these folks are here, and I didn't want to just sit there.
Well, I understand that, but quite frankly, we spent an hour and a half listening to stuff we can't even make a decision on.
I wouldn't recommend you make a decision on this question.
So I would suggest, we got, we're going to be up here taking some time. My folks are going to describe this neighborhood and go into detail how they're picking the traffic in this old, established, beautiful neighborhood, and it's going to destroy the neighborhood, and we're going to take some time. And I just didn't want to waste any more of your time with doing that.
And let me say, you could, I don't, I get words put in my mouth all the time, you could hear it, and you could actually deny it, because it doesn't comply with the Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah, but is that fair? I don't know.
Well, and in an effort to allow due process to be complete, I thought it'd be better to take the testimony and then continue it.
And then if you deny it, it's going to go to the Board of County Commissioners anyway, and you still got a problem, then you're facing with what you said earlier.
It's not our problem. It's the county commissioners' problem. They've got to make a decision on something they can't make a decision on.
Correct. And then you already said, is, hey, we want things complete before we hear them. I just heard that earlier tonight, which I think is an excellent policy.
Multiple times.
On the other side of this argument, the applicant has the opportunity at this time to vet problems and hopefully make resolution to some of our suggestions to some of those problems, that when it does come back around, should it be continued, that he would be a little farther ahead, because he has a chance to hear what people, you know.
Well, he's heard a lot of them tonight, but I mean, yeah.
Probably going to hear some more.
Yeah, and so we can be here for some time further. It's up to you.
I would, if, a motion would be in order if someone wanted to make a motion to continue.
I'll make the motion that we continue.
We have a motion, we have a second? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to talk about the.
I second it for discussion.
I make the motion.
I agree with the motion. I think that, like I said at the beginning, I think we're here before we should be here.
I agree with that, too.
If what I understand Gary's point to be, if we're talking only about procedural, and we have not satisfied the procedural requirements, we can't walk down the road. It doesn't matter what we hear.
I agree.
We have no business wasting anybody else's time.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
I don't think it's a complete waste of time. This is the reason I got to the point about the applicant, and I'd like to hear from the applicant. I mean, it's, the writing's pretty much on the wall here, that, because of, yeah, that, like, if you'd like to speak, if you'd like to hear any more of the testimony of the public.
I don't think that that's necessary.
No, I don't think it's necessary, but I just kind of want.
I think we have a motion on the table. We need to discuss this motion.
Are we wishing to continue until February or March?
We have it. As part of the motion, when would you want to continue that, too?
I would continue it until at least March, to give them an opportunity to do what needs to be done and make sure that it's done.
March, is that okay with a second?
I'm in my second to March tenth continuance.
Let me ask this before we have a final vote on. Are we cutting anyone off that needs to be heard tonight, that can't be here?
I think everybody that has signed up to speak has spoken.
No, no, no.
Except for Ms. Nielsen.
Well, yeah.
Well, all I'm saying is, this will not close the hearing, because it would be continued when it comes back up.
Right. We're going to.
That, exactly. Exactly. You understand what I'm saying, Ms. Nielsen? Yeah?
If I could make a comment.
You can make a comment.
To Mr. Kramer's comment, we would like to hear the evidence sooner rather than later, so we do have an opportunity to address any of the concerns. I think the evidence that we're going to, that we are going to hear is a finite amount of time, and it's either going to be heard tonight, or it'll be heard at a later time, but it's still going to occupy the same amount of time to hear it. It gives us an opportunity to hear it tonight and then try to respond to it. Very briefly, I wanted to make a comment on the abandonments. It is actually very common to not have easements abandoned within a subdivision. They are, by virtue of the plat, whenever the plat is recorded, that the easements are nullified, and the plat supersedes those easements. That is actually the course that this project took. It came up in T R C, that they wanted to see the easements abandoned up front, rather than just through the plat. That's the reason that, how the sequence got established, as far as when the abandonment got filed and when the project got filed. I still don't see an issue with the easements. They serve our property. I understand Mr. Davis may want to look further into that. But basically, I just like the opportunity to hear things now, if we could, so we have an opportunity to get back with our client and come back to the next meeting with a little more information.
We have one more person to talk, do you?
It's up to y'all.
I don't hear you again, anyway.
Yeah, that's what I say.
All right.
Motion's on the table?
Motion's on the table, second's on the table. Any other discussion? Okay. We have a vote. On favor of continuing.
Will this stop the testimony for this evening?
Yes. On favor of continuing until the March meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Hey, the guy that made the second of the motion.
Well, I just wanted to hear, I gave him the chance to hear.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is number seven, Dixie Electric Car of Destin. I'll ask Tim Brown from our staff to brief the board on this application.
If we could, take your conversations, if you're going out, going out, we can get moving with the meeting.
Goodbye, Mary.
Okay, let's get started.
Thank you. Good evening, Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering, requesting the approval to develop thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty square feet of commercial slash storage space on three point six one acres with a future land use of village mixed use. It's located at the southwest corner of Mall Drive and U.S. Highway Ninety-eight. It was approved by the Design Review Board at their December meeting. They have a proportionate fair share requirement of twenty-five thousand one hundred dollars. There's two additional environmental comments that's associated with the project. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the requested project is consistent with the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. Now, entertaining questions the board may have.
Questions of staff?
The survey showed that all of the site was in, what, flood zones?
Well, there are some uplands as well as wetlands, so some of it's an X, some of it's an A.
Are they mitigating anything to fill?
They're filling a small portion to the south.
Right. You're filling a small portion on the south side of the site?
We're filling most of the development site, actually.
Okay, so.
We have three point two acres. We have just a portion of the development.
I mean, a mitigation fill? Mitigating?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Advocate?
Scott Jenkins, with Jenkins Engineering. As Tim described, this is a site that's at the corner of Mall Drive and U.S. Ninety-eight. Total site area is about three point two acres. They're actually developing about, a little less than two acres of that, and leaving the rest of it in its natural state to the south. It's thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space, basically at this site. Just want to point out a couple of things. The allowable floor area ratio on this site would be a two point oh. They're actually at a point one, so it's a very low, intense development. The impervious surface ratio is seventy-five percent. There will be a lot there at twenty-nine percent, and the open space is at about seventy percent of the entire site. Just to give you a couple of highlights on the site plan, the access is actually off Mall Drive here to the side, the fronts here, as Tim said, we have been through this after before, already got approved. We have one building here, parking in the center, having the rear of the building, and another building down to the south. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have about this. It's pretty straightforward, I think.
Any questions, David?
Cart storage is all enclosed?
Yes, sir.
And will the, without looking at the elevations of the buildings, since they weren't providing any, will the north wall facing Highway Ninety-eight be all glass walls, or how's that?
I had a picture while ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Full of commentary. It's not all glass, but we'll have some.
Yeah. Okay.
Nice looking place.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Jenkins?
Everything's open. There's no exfiltration, nothing under.
No, sir.
Okay. No other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wish to be heard? Didn't have anybody sign up. See, and now we'll close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, last item on our agenda is number eight, Spyglass Hill, Small Scale Amendment. I'll ask Sam Salmon for our staff to come up and brief the commission on this project.
Good evening, Commissioners, Christine Salmon, of Walton County Planning. I have a request tonight of, from the applicant, Three Ninety-Three Land Company L L C, submitted by Jenkins Engineering. This is a small scale amendment, number two oh one five dash oh two one. It is to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map on approximately two point five one acres from Conservation Residential Two to One to Low Density Residential. The proposed amendment of the future land use map is requested to support a proposed five lot, single-family residential subdivision, as the proposed project is inconsistent with the current designation of Conservation Residential Two to One. That's the reason they're asking for the low-density residential. The subject property includes two point five one acres on undeveloped land. The site is approximately three hundred and twenty-nine feet by three hundred and thirty-two feet. To the east of the property is a vacant two point five oh acre parcel. To the west is an existing sixteen lot, single-family residential subdivision known as the cottages at Center Road of Beach. Directly to the north of the site is vacant property, which supports an established church on the northwestern portion of the property, which is four point seven five acres. And to the south is a sixteen lot-platted, single-family subdivision known as Golf Reflections. The request is to approve or to not approve the designation from Conservation Residential Two to One to Low Density Residential. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for?
Just the existing legal, or as furnished on our exhibit, shows the two point five acres to be already divided into six lots. Is that correct?
On the survey?
Yeah, on the survey that we received.
Okay.
Boundary and topo.
Yeah, I can probably speak to that.
Yeah, I think it's.
It is six lot. And the proposed, yeah, and the proposed.
I think it's six lots, but it is six lots.
Okay. Because they had given me five.
But it, it's described as parcels, parcels, and parcels, parcels. Do you know when that was cut up? I mean, and it's only supposed to be a five lot subdivision?
Yes. Yeah, I'll.
Right.
It's kind of a specific reason that I can kind of explain, but yeah, I'll try.
That's the only questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Nothing else for staff? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, this is, like Sam said, this is, oh, Scott Jenkins, Jenkins Engineering. This is a small scale amendment request on the two and a half acres. This is a future land use map of the area. The sign is actually here, is this two and a half acres. It is described as these different parcels. I think they were defined as meets and bounds and recorded. I don't know that they were legally created, but it is, they do have different parcel ID numbers for those, to answer that. When the owner of this property came to us, he wanted to do a five lot, single-family subdivision on two and a half acres, which is pretty low density for this area. The problem that we ran into is that the Conservation Residential land use has a very restrictive requirement, and I'll kind of go through the definition just real quickly. I'll try to be short here. But Conservation Residential is really, in the definition in the L D C, is for larger tracts of private property that are intended for low-density use and enhancement of natural resource conservation. The classification responds to a variety of circumstances, such as limited development potential due to environmental sensitivity, including floodplain, including floodplains, land, oh, sorry, including development constraints caused by the presence of salt marsh, wetlands, or floodplains. Land use is limited to low-impact residential uses and activities. Well, this site has no floodplain, has no wetlands, it has no, and it's not really large enough. The C R Two to One land use is really good for clustering when you have wetlands that you're working around, and buffering, and things like that. But on a two and a half acre parcel, it's not great for that. The Low Density Residential is strictly a land use category that allows for a single-family just like this. It doesn't allow for any commercial. It would increase the density to four potentially on this, but they do have a development order in review right now that's a five lot subdivision. And really, the reason that they're asking for this is that with the C R Two to One requirement, there's a sixty percent preservation requirement associated with that. And open space, which must remain in its natural state, that's why we're here. And that's such a restrictive requirement on a parcel like this. They actually want to meet the sixty percent open space, but they want to have yards. They don't want to leave, this is not the best-looking scrub out there in the world, so that it's kind of sparse, and doesn't look very good. So they really want to do this and still leave the sixty percent open space, but be able to put grass down and have yards there. And that's really the intent of this request, is to be able to do that. It's not to increase density, it's not to increase development potential, it's really just for that.
I think it's more than a logical development, right here, branching back from Three Ninety-Three.
Right.
And he makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Any other questions for?
There was a question on the traffic. I noticed there was a line there, says it does not appear to be available capacity. Is there something worked out on that?
Well, good question.
Actually, the developers that are doing this site actually did this site also a couple of years ago. This was an infill parcel. It came before you, you may not remember. It is actually just six lots, and they're basically doing the same configuration they're doing five here. Whenever they did that, they extended North Deno Drive, and the county allowed them to apply that proportionate fair share cost to the construction of a public road. And so that's what their plan is here also.
Any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? See, now we'll close the public portion of the meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
The meeting will stand adjourned.
Dean didn't have a very good day today.
He got skunked, I believe.
He did, man. He's probably at a bar right now. Hey, Mark, when do you think that litigation on the abandonments?